Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting in the Bloomington City Council to order. Tonight is Monday, March 28th, 2022. Thank you all for joining us here in the chambers and on online. Start our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you once again. Good evening and welcome. Mr. Brillert, if you could please call the roll call of the council.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
De La Sandro.
Present.
Lohman.
Here.
Coulter.
Present.
Nelson.
Martin.
Here.
Mayor Bussie.
Present.
Records show that all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are here this evening. Next up, council is item three is the approval of the agenda. I don't think we have any changes. We do have a couple of introductory items, a proclamation, and once again this week, an introduction of new employees. We do have two public hearings, one on the vacation of a public drainage utility and sidewalk, the other on community development block grand consolidation plan. And so we have a total of three things under item seven are hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. Under our organizational business, we have an update on 700 American, our discussion on the council rules of procedure that we started last week, and then a discussion on our 2020 legislative priorities. So, council, any questions or additions or amendments to this week's agenda tonight? Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question about 8.4. Is it our intention at all this evening to try to take action on that at all? I mean, I know there's a number of folks that may be in the audience that maybe, I know we moved that up the last time, so I just wasn't sure what you were thinking with that.
Are you thinking 8.2, the council rules of procedure?
Yeah, sorry, 8.2, sorry, 8.2, sorry.
We did move it up last time. We've got a pretty short agenda this evening. I don't think it's too late in the evening. The hearings I don't expect are going to last too long, and the update on 700 American Boulevard. So I think we're going to get to it within a reasonable time, so I think we'd be okay.
Makes sense to me. I just wanted to be sure that that's what we intend.
Understood. Council, any additional questions? If not, I would move approval of our agenda for this evening.
Second.
On a motion and a second by councilmember Lohman to approve this evening's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. We have an agenda, and we'll move on to item four on our agenda, which is our public comment period. And item 4.1 on our public comment period is a response to the prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Berbougy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. At our previous meeting, several commenters, a couple I wanted to provide some follow-up on, we had two speakers for an organization called Maria's Voice, which provides preventive domestic violence services, especially training for people to be able to spot and identify potential domestic violence when it is occurring, and their interest in having the city essentially become a client of their services. So we have our public health staff and legal team and police will be working together to evaluate if there's a place for that in what we're doing here and our work at the city. So we'll have some follow-up on that in the future if we have recommendations from staff. We also had additional conversation about the wayward shopping carts. Mr. Thule asked if we could follow up with Met Council, since some of the carts seem to be ending up at transit, at bus stops, and if it's something that the Met Council would be interested in working on, and I have not had a chance to talk to Met Council representatives about that, so it's still on the to-do list. Finally, Barb McIntosh talked about the tax statements that were out and the increasing valuations, and asked a question about whether the council would consider freezing taxes for seniors. And I think it's important for folks to know that the way that we handle property taxes is defined in the state statute, and the council doesn't have the authority to make a decision like that. There are certain hardship provisions related to payment of taxes, and we will make sure that we communicate those as we typically do. And also, when we have the city assessor here for his presentation on April 11th, he will talk also about the property tax refund program for people that are income-eligible. There is a way to get refunded on your property taxes, and frankly, it's an underutilized program. So, I know, we always make mention of that, and we promote it on the website, but there's a lot of money that gets left on the table by people. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Berbougy. Council, any questions for Mr. Berbougy? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you. Two quick things I had asked last time about getting an update on some comments a commenter had made. The city manager and I have spoke about that and are working on it, so I just wanted to follow up and say thanks for doing that. And then I just want to make sure we get back to Mr. Thule, once we have that conversation with the Met Council, so that he gets that information. And if we could also get that information, I'd appreciate it.
I will. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Council, anything additional? Councilmember De La Sandro.
Just one follow-up question on that last item, city manager. I'm wondering if consideration for what the, over and above what we do today, what we could do to encourage and/or aid folks in potentially filling out those forms or other things like that, if there's workshops or the things we could consider. I'd love to have the staff kind of innovate on ideas for not only communicating that, but also offering assistance if it means that more folks can take advantage of those things. Thanks.
Anything else, council? Seeing none, we will move on to item 4.2 on our agenda, which is the public comment period. And the public comment period is, of course, a 20-minute period at the beginning of each council meeting, where we allow members of the public up to five minutes to speak to the council on items not on tonight's agenda. We do limit the time to five minutes per person, not for any reason other than we want to make sure it's even and equal for everybody who is coming forward to speak to public comment. And again, it's not a back-and-forth or a problem-solving opportunity, it's just an opportunity for the council to listen to members of the public on items, as I said, not on tonight's agenda. I know we had Ms. Sally Ness called in, and she wanted to speak this week, and I believe she's on the phone. Leah, do we have Sally Ness or anyone else wishing to speak on item 4.2, public comment period?
Yes, sir. We have Ms. Sally Ness on the line. Ms. Ness, please, your line is now open, you may now speak.
Thank you. You can hear me?
Good evening. Yes, we can. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. The following is from a 2014 text by a then newly-elected council member. Quote, "I received two calls this weekend about the high volume of traffic in, out, and regularly full parking lots at AFYFC. I was asked to come over to observe. I took a few, poor quality, pictures at 4:00 PM and about 4:40 PM. During both times, I saw combined 80% full, based on my estimation. Reports that in recent days, people are parking along the west portion of the parking lot and leaving their lights on for extended periods of time, the effect being that the lights shining into their homes. At least one affected neighbor is planning to shine powerful lights from their home at the cars. This is the kind of thing that happens when feuds start to get out of hand, it seems to me. Bloomington can ill afford another race-related PR mess. I repeat earlier requests. One, the city needs to be more diligent in monitoring and administering the cop. Two, we simply must do something to intervene to bring better understanding to neighbors and AF's center of the other side's perspectives, and make sure both sides are doing their part to get the facts right and work to find common ground regarding their conflicting legal rights. I am willing to meet with whatever staff you deem appropriate." End quote. About a year later, 2015, the same council member writes an email with the subject, "Full parking lot Friday and parking in, no parking spaces, too much traffic all weekend, university is not a compliant use." The email states, quote, "I have ideas about what we do, small group of neighbors at the center. Bloomington is walking a tight rope on this situation, and we don't want to be negligent should a spark of some sort turn into another PR rap for Bloomington." End quote. A year later, and the council member does not mention the concern for more diligent monitoring and administering the cop. The overuse and noncompliant use continued, but the concern of the council member to monitor and/or administer the cop did not. The next year, 2016, I wrote my first blog post that confirms the overuse and noncompliant use continued. It was titled "Double Parking." From the blog post, January 25th, 2016, I spoke at the city council meeting with ongoing concerns. I asked the city to address double parking in the Smith Park parking lot by patrons of the neighboring building. At the next meeting, city manager said no additional comments this time. Previously, I asked where does someone with small children park, and where does someone who is handicapped park? I received a response in handicap parking. Smith Park at the time did not have handicap parking. Another response I received was that if a person was unable to leave because of double parking, they could get the officer who would assist in locating the person to remove the vehicle. There has not been an officer in the area for months, so I asked the city again to address the issue. I brought a copy of an article from the Star and Tribune about the young man who died from a peanut allergy and asked the city to address the issue of double parking. I commented about the seriousness of a peanut allergy, and a big sting, and falling off the apparatus, and the need to be able to exit the parking lot. An ambulance would have a hard time navigating the parking lot. It is possible they would try to leave and find out they had to back up. Regardless if it is an emergency or not, a patron of Smith Park should be able to find a parking space and should be able to leave the parking lot when they desire and not have to wait for a patron of the building who double parked against posted park rules. The Darrell Building was overused and noncompliant then, and still is, and the city should address it. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Leah, do we have anyone else on the phone who wishes to speak to item 4.2?
Jerry, currently have no one on the line. You may continue.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the council chambers wishes to speak to item 4.2, our public comment period? Anything not on tonight's agenda?
Hello, council. My name is Rick Oliva. I didn't bring my glasses, but I wrote in bigger font, and I brought a prop, so if I can get the overhead for 30 seconds. If you can't read that, it says Jerry Springer. Last week, there were some comments about Jerry Springer, and my dad actually met him once, so you can take that down. My dad actually met him once, and so I looked him up, and Jerry Springer was a political campaign advisor to Robert F. Kennedy. He was a lawyer. He was a member of the Cincinnati City Council and mayor for a year. He's had a long career in television and movies, and by all accounts, he is an intelligent, successful businessperson. But I don't think that's what you meant last week when you made your comments, Mayor When you scolded some of the audience members last week for clapping after an elderly woman who expressed fear of losing her home. I'm pretty sure that what you're talking about is kind of the tabloid behavior, the encouraging behavior that Jerry Springer had on his show, where it's Jerry, Jerry, you know, people acting kind of crazy, but it was for sensationalism, it was for entertainment. Councilmember Coulter, I believe you mentioned, and I remember from my time on the school board, that there's no law requiring you to have this public comment, but if you do have public comment, there's very little you can do to control what is said at that comment period. So it got me wondering about the topic of clapping. Can we actually support each other? The California Supreme Court did address this issue back in 1970. I don't know, that's what I found on the internet. I don't know if there's something newer. They said, "Audience activities such as heckling, interrupting, harsh questioning, and booing, even though they may be impolite and discourteous, can nonetheless advance the goals of the First Amendment. For many citizens, such participation in public meetings, whether supportive or critical of the speaker, may constitute the only manner in which they can express their views to a large number of people." Without, and then they, there's a bunch of extra stuff, and then they go on, "Without doubt, petitioners' conduct in the instant case, including clapping, was closely akin to pure speech." So my question for legal counsel is this. Mayor Bussie, you encouraged clapping for the newly hired police officers last week, which was great. We all wanted to show our support, but you discouraged or stopped audience members from clapping in support of this woman who is critical of the city. So the question is, can you do that? Are you within your rights to encourage clapping for things that are supportive of the city and discourage it when it isn't? Especially during the designated comment period, if those members are not engaging in otherwise disruptive behavior. So like, if someone starts shouting someone down, I could see how that could be disruptive. You could stop them from doing that. You know, and I think, you know, councilmember De La Sandro did mention, she said, "We have to start trusting each other." For me personally, I felt like that sort of broke some of that trust. You, and you yourself mentioned, a lot of people are nervous to come up in front of this microphone. It's funny, 'cause I'm in a band, but in the band, I'm behind a guitar, so I have a wall behind me. And so, just coming and talking on the microphone, it isn't a natural thing for me either. And I think, you know, even the interactions that we've had that have been less than friendly, I think that discourages people from wanting to participate. I think last week, people showing support for this woman to tell them, "Don't clap." Whether legally you can or can't, I don't think that you should stop people, you know, if it's for five minutes, it's one thing. If it's for the two seconds from going from here to there, I think that's a whole other story. And I get it, I was on the school board for four years. It sucks to sit here and have people come in, week after week, telling you how terrible you are and what a bad job you're doing. And like we saw last night, a lot of us saw on the Oscars what happens when someone hits their breaking point and they want to snap at people, but I think we can do better. And I know you're a good speaker. I know that you're, you know, you're able to communicate well and effectively. If I didn't, I wouldn't waste my breath telling you that I think you can do better, but I think you can do better. And so my request would be, if these people do decide to clap, that you just say, "Just let it go." So that's my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliva. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak at public comment period tonight?
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I am not speaking on my behalf tonight, but someone that couldn't be here, so I'm just going to read the message that I received. My name is Natalie Maroz.
Thank you.
"I wish I could be there, but I can't. But in the event someone could ask this question of the city council, why are taxpayer dollars being used for radio advertising for jobs? Heard at 5:15 AM, need to fill lifeguard jobs and such. How much does it cost to do this? Other cities post job openings for temp jobs like that in high schools, especially on a radio station like Cool 108, that I don't think any teenagers would listen to. And it was for summer jobs only." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maroz. Anyone else?
My name is Al Larson. Kind of disappointed with wanting to shut down public comment. That's the whole purpose of a council meeting, historically, be able to get up there and speak in front of the local government. It's pretty much like violating the First Amendment by not allowing people to do so. And, check my notes here, should I keep on track? You know, what are you people afraid of? It seems like when you got something that's uncomfortable, as in Valley View Park or something.
Excuse me, we, this is on the agenda for later this evening. I appreciate, and we, generally in public comment period, we take items that are not on tonight's agenda. So this is on the agenda for later tonight.
Okay, but, you know, I wasn't able to make it any time before, so I wasn't able to speak on it, but.
And I'm sorry about that, but our rules of procedure have always said that public comment period is for items not on tonight's agenda.
So much for the First Amendment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cindy Merchant, mayor, councilmembers. I received, I always go through your Bloomington briefing. This one here is from March 2022. In taking a look at, I like the way everything is broken down and transparent on this paper. So we have improvements with our sales taxes are going to be used for. The Bloomington Ice Gardens, 32 million. Community health and wellness for the Public Health Building and Creekside Community Center, 70 million. Dwan Golf Course, 15 million. And the Bloomington Center of Arts Expansion, Concert Hall, Schneider Theater upgrades, 33 million. Add those together, is 150 million. I guess with all of that, I'm disappointed that we don't have a DMV. I don't understand why that went away. And then, now I understand that we're going to be taxed 105 million for another water park out by the Mall of America, when I know we got the Wolf Water Park that anybody can come in and buy a ticket and use that lodge, Aqua Park. I was also on the committee for the Bloomington Valley View Pool Restoration here back in, maybe it was 1997, 1998, something like that. Randy Qualley, Diane Mole, her heading it up. There was a Steve Bianchi also involved, and what the cost of all that was. And I think the results there was, is a fabulous facility. I don't understand why we need to have the people of Bloomington pay another 105 million dollars.
And if I could correct you there.
Yeah.
The people of Bloomington are not paying 105 million dollars.
Okay.
They are not.
Then, then tell me.
And we will be happy to explain it all next. I don't want to take into your time here.
Okay.
It is through tax increment financing, which is, means the taxes generated by the project itself go back into the project. That's the very simple explanation for it. But the citizens of Bloomington.
Okay.
Are not paying 105 million dollars. There's not a dime of property tax money going into the project.
Okay.
All right?
I just, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're 13 minutes into it, so.
Anyone else? Mr. Thule.
I'll go real quick. Al Larson spoke here a little bit ago. The council rules of procedures amendment is at 8.2, says nothing about public comment as far as, and last time you allowed us to speak on public comment, during public comment.
No, actually, Mr. Thule, I, we set aside a comment period for that specific.
That was not on the agenda last.
It wasn't.
Council, you actually amended your agenda.
You're right, we didn't.
Against open meeting rules, so you shouldn't allow Mr. Larson to speak.
It's not against open meeting rules.
Well, you amended the agenda, and you added.
And that is within the rules.
Us a public comment opportunity last council meeting. Not cool. So some people didn't, weren't able to prepare for public comment during public comment.
We had a very good discussion last night.
This rules, it says council rules or procedure amendment on your agenda. It says nothing about, Al speaking on public comment here. So if you look at your agenda, it says nothing about public comment. So he should be allowed to speak.
We are amending the public comment rule.
You are amending it, but on your agenda today. It says nothing about public comment, so Mr. Larson should be allowed to speak.
Within the packet, it shows it very clearly.
It doesn't say it on your agenda. If you don't read the packet, if you summarize your agenda, it says nothing about public comment. He should be allowed to speak.
Mr. Berbougy, will you read this, please?
Mr. Berbougy, read 8.2.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I think the more relevant comment here is that on the agenda, the very first sentence under item number four, public comment period, says "The public comment period is reserved for comments on matters not on this agenda."
Well, 8.2 does, it's not saying anything about public comments, so a person who is coming here, just looking at a simple agenda, you'd have to read all until 8.2. So I'm just letting you guys know, Al should be allowed to speak.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any items not on tonight's agenda?
Hi, I'm Barb McIntosh. I'm the one that they clapped for last week, and I'm sorry. Okay, I'm referring to two editorials that were in the Minneapolis Star. One was in on March 10, March 15, written by Mike Myers and Art Rolneck. And the other one was written on March 10 by Kim Wyatt, and they both referred to the water park. Now, on Mike Myers, there was a comment in there that said, "Government entities at any level do not have the constitutional or moral standing to tax for sports, entertainment, or private concern." Now, I was of the, I thought that the water park was a private entity that it is. So anyway, I looked up this tax increment financing, and it says, "A public financing method used as a subsidy for redevelopment, infrastructure, and other community improvement projects." Well, that is none of those. So I looked up the statutes. The statute says, "The TIF plan must be approved by the municipality after a public hearing." When was that scheduled? Was there a public hearing?
Yes, there was.
When was it?
I'm trying to remember the date, but it was a public hearing of both the Port Authority and the City Council.
Well, shouldn't that have been put on a referendum if we're spending 105 million dollars? I mean, that's not chicken feed.
It is not chicken feed, I agree. It is not, it is tax increment financing funding. It isn't property tax.
But how can that go to a private entity? The water park isn't going to be owned by the city of Bloomington.
The water park is not owned by the city of Bloomington.
No, so how can our money go to it?
Tax increment financing is a traditional development tool used by Minnesota cities to pay for, generally, it's the infrastructure around a building. The roads, the infrastructure, the parking, that's where tax increment financing is typically used in projects across Minnesota, and has been used for 40 years, I believe, maybe 50. The legislature, at the end of the last legislative session, in an effort to help communities across the state come out of the pandemic recession and to spur economic development, made a slight tweak to the TIF financing laws.
What was the tweak?
The tweak said that a certain amount of money could go into actual projects, could be right, put right into projects, so something beyond.
That are private entities that aren't public?
That are private entities, they could go beyond the typical things like infrastructure, roads, and parking, and it could go directly to the project. The legislature did this once before, I think it was back in 2012, just as we were coming out of the recession. A very similar thing happened. They changed the law and made this doable within the past legislative session.
Well, I just don't understand. I just think that it's an awful lot of taxpayers' money going to something that we don't need. And why wasn't it put on a referendum?
It wasn't put on a referendum because typically, TIF funding is not a referendum-type issue. And again, it's not taxpayer dollars. This is money that is tax, property tax revenue generated by the project itself. So because the project is built, it increases in value, it generates property tax dollars, that money then goes back into the project.
So you're assuming that the water park is going to bring money in?
The water, yes, the water park, if, the water park is built, when the water park is built, it will have a value, it will be taxed as, you know, through the property tax system. The money that is generated through that property tax will go back into the property, into the property.
And what if it bombs? Who's in the bag then for the 105 million?
The 105 million is taken on by Triple Five, the people, the private developers who are developing this.
And they already still owe 1.3 million on the Mall of America. And that was 30 years ago.
They have been refinancing throughout the years, and it's just their business model that they, rather than paying off a debt, they keep refinancing and staying liquid.
So, let me get this right. You think. You think that this company that is still 1.3 million in debt on the Mall of America has 30 years to pay it off? Now, you're going to support a water park that they're going to build? And you're going to put us on the hook for 105 million?
I'm going to say it one more time here, and then I don't want to hear it again. Bloomington taxpayers are not on the hook for 1.5 or 105 million dollars. Bloomington taxpayers are not on the hook for this project. This is a privately financed, privately owned, privately run project. Bloomington taxpayers are not on the hook for this project. If this should, if this project goes underwater, it will be like any other business that goes into bankruptcy. It will go into bankruptcy court. Other investors will come and probably buy that debt for probably 75 cents or 50 cents on the dollar and reopen a water park there. Because it's a water park. Bloomington taxpayers will not be asked to contribute. Bloomington taxpayers will not be asked to bail out. Bloomington taxpayers will not be on the hook if the water park does not work. And all the information that we've seen, the studies by people who know a lot about water parks, say that it's going to be a very successful project.
But why didn't you ask the people in the city of Bloomington if they wanted it?
This is a private developer who's developing their private land. We didn't ask the city of Bloomington taxpayers if they, if a SIC should come in and put their, put a business there.
But that's where I was confused, because when it says that the money shouldn't go by the entities.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate the back and forth and the opportunity to clarify some of this, but your time is up, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I appreciate, and you know what? This is a great example, this is a great example of the type of back and forth and conversation that we'd be able to have if we make the amendments to the public comment period and do it before the, the public comment period. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to maybe offer to Barb, our Port Authority Administrator, Shane Redling, has always been really fantastic about sitting down with residents. I know he sat with people in this audience for multiple hours explaining some of the economic development projects that are happening in South Loop. I highly encourage you to meet with him, and he can walk through every single component and what the city's rules are, and our, our role specifically, the private developers' role specifically. Again, it can be, it can sound even more complicated when it's, you know, in a five-minute public comment period. But I think at the bottom, at the end of the day, it is going to be beneficial for residents in the city of Bloomington because we do get revenue from that project. I encourage you to sit down with city staff and have a really long conversation where you can ask all your questions and get them answered, because the public comment period isn't, it just isn't that effective of a place to do that.
I'm sorry, we're past our 20 minutes. Counsel, do we want to extend the 20-minute public comment period?
I have one minute.
Well, Mayor, I, I would say if we do that, that with all respect, you've had time at the podium already. So if there are other folks who have not had time yet who would like to take advantage of that time, I think we should allow them to first.
That's fair.
But I, I just, I just want to make sure that folks, everyone who would like an opportunity to speak tonight has that.
So counsel, I'd look for a motion to extend public comment period.
So, so moved?
Councilmember Lowman, second.
Uh, councilmember Martin, and should we say, are there others beyond this, this final bite at the apple here? Okay, then we'll say, just for the extra two minutes that we, we have to hear what you have to say.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. Any further discussion, counsel? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Go ahead.
Just in speculating with these taxes that I brought up earlier, I see, so my daughter's 25, graduated from Kennedy. A lot of her friends, some younger, some older, have come out of college. They are now starting their new professional careers and are thinking about townhouses, condos, things like that. And so I've been going with my daughter, and she's been also visiting with some of her friends that are looking at townhouses, condos. They would like to get into, get out of rental and get into a more permanent situation. And so in doing so, and in looking at some things, we're looking at PITI, HOAs and things like that. And we're finding out that she and, and any of her friends cannot afford a townhouse or a condo in the city of Bloomington. They do have to go, and we do, they're, you know, all of these have been increasing in value astronomically in the last five years. So they're moving away from Bloomington, but I, I just ask that maybe you keep a hold on some of these taxes, because even the seniors are going to be leaving. You're going to have your young people that are going to be replacing the seniors in the housing area, leaving. They're going, you know, they're looking up at Brooklyn Park, they're looking down at Apple Valley, and a lot, a lot of these that are way further out. That's all I want to say, is when they look at that, when you, when you bring in additional taxes, that just moves up your PITI to the point where they, they just can't do it. Because they haven't had a career for 25 years. They're starting out, they maybe worked four or five years. They're saving their money, they're all working hard, but they love Bloomington. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make one clarification. Those sales tax, those proposals, those projects that you brought up, just want to be clear, if the legislature approves Bloomington putting, moving those forward, they would be on the ballot, so residents would be voting for them.
Okay.
So we aren't just approving those, we're not just spending that money. They are going on the ballot, and residents will vote for them each individually.
Councilmember Lowen?
Mayor, I'll try to be brief. I just wanted to just thank you for clarifying the, the TIF piece earlier, because it's easy to, to misunderstand that, and then we just had this clarification here. And I'm wondering, and I know this isn't the time for that, so I'll be a little more descriptive when we get down to our policy and procedure piece later on in the meeting. But I just, I wonder if it makes some sense, you know, either in one of these meetings or as one of your report out of, of this meeting, to kind of talk about that. I know you've done that in the past, but maybe folks have missed that, and it'd just be a good idea to go back, because we've got a lot of these types of things, it's really easy to get confused as a taxpayer. And I appreciate the fact that folks are, you know, making sure that we're accountable to that.
Thank you, councilmember? Councilmember Colter?
Sorry, Mayor, one, one quick thing, just in terms of thinking about the response that the city manager will provide, I think it might be useful to provide context in terms of perhaps some other projects, other developments in Bloomington that have used tax increment financing, so that folks get an idea of, of kind of where that's happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? With that, I will close tonight's public comment period, and we will move on in our agenda. Move on to item five, our introductory items, and item 5.1 is a proclamation for National Public Health Week, so I'm going to head down to the podium. So the proclamation I'm going to be reading tonight is for National Public Health Week, which will be coming up April 4th through the 10th here in Bloomington, and I believe across the country. And as we know, our, our folks in public health, for the work that they've put in for the last couple of years, they deserve more than a week. I think they deserve a public health month or two months or so for the outstanding work that they have done. And before I get into the proclamation, I wanted to share with you a video that kind of shows the work that they have done over the past couple of years. Grant, if you could please roll the video.
They always found a way to overcome. They always found a way to make things happen, to rally, to pull together, to do something. A pandemic comes along, and you have to pivot, you have to shift. And you're now changing some of the ways you do your work, but it's still driven by that same drive of you got into public health to help people and to improve the health and well-being of the community you serve.
This was really new for all of us to be front and center with a spotlight on us. We had been the wizard behind the curtain most of the time. Everyone knew who we were and were constantly asking us questions.
And then seeing clients and their loved ones losing their jobs and able to pay rent or even put a foot on the table for their kids.
As we're getting questions, concerns, challenges, we're connecting people to resources. We're connecting them to the answers for authoritative, evidence-based, science-driven public health information.
Always kind of like tell my clients that, hey, I'm here with you. I'm going through the same thing, but we're here together.
COVID has constantly thrown curveballs at us this entire time. I feel like I'm a better public health professional after all of this. It's been stressful, it's been heartbreaking, it's been emotionally and mentally draining. We've had little wins here and there, and they always seem to come at the perfect time.
We started January of '21 doing vaccinations. We've done a little over 130 clinics.
We had a huge team that was working on those clinics. So neat to be a part of it. We had our own staff from all different areas of public health, not just the clinic staff. We had our fire departments. We had partners from the city of Edina and Richfield who also came as volunteers.
It was not uncommon for people to cry at our clinic. And just that, that sheer emotion of, I just got something that's going to protect me. When things happened, they did their regular work, and they did this, doing events to build well-being and connections in communities that were isolated, whether it was some of our older adults or some of our families with young kids.
I designed the original layout for the Mall of America vaccine site. The state oftentimes would call on local public health and be like, we have the resource, but you know your community.
You have continued to exceed expectations. Everything that we have asked for local public health to do, you have risen to those challenges and exceeded it. Continue to keep moving forward with that, that grace, humility, and kindness.
I would encourage every single one of my colleagues to take that time to find joy and rest. Then let's get back together and let's show up for the community again.
We actually showed that video as part of our State of the City address on Wednesday, and after that, immediately after that, introduced the city of Bloomington public health workers, and they received a well-deserved standing ovation from the crowd there. It was, it was a great moment for the, the workers who have done an enormous amount for this community over the past two years. And so with that, I'd like to read this proclamation for National Public Health Week, April 4th through the 10th, 2022. Whereas the week of April 4th through 10th, 2022 is National Public Health Week with the theme "Public Health is Where You Are." And whereas public health staff work with communities to prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks such as COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic, housing instability, natural disasters and catastrophes caused by human activity. And whereas a person's public health status in Bloomington can differ drastically by ZIP code due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, access to healthy food, affordability of housing, access to education, and access to healthcare, with a 10-year drop in life expectancy for part of the 55420 ZIP code compared to part of the 55438 ZIP code. And whereas the United States faces a heavy burden from chronic diseases, with six in 10 U.S. adults having a chronic disease and four in 10 adults having two or more, and chronic diseases causing seven of every 10 deaths annually in the United States. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic and recent racial violence has illuminated and exacerbated racial inequities, prompting a growing number of state and local governments, including Bloomington, to declare racism a public health crisis. Now therefore I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim the week of April 4th through the 10th, 2022, as National Public Health Week in Bloomington. And I call upon the people of this community to observe the week by helping their families, friends, and neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to better understand the value of public health and supporting opportunities to adopt preventative lifestyle habits in observance of this year's theme, "Public Health is Where You Are At." Signed this day, the 28th of March, 2022. As I said, so appreciative to all the work that has been done in public health. And Dr. Nick Kelly here, I want to thank you personally, and if you could, please share with your entire staff our thanks from the entire city council for the outstanding work, and so glad to, to make this proclamation for Public Health Week the first week of April. And as we move on to item 5.2, which is our introduction of new employees, it just so happens all of our new employees this week are public health employees. So I'd invite Dr. Nick Kelly up to introduce our new employees in, in our public health department. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council? We continue hiring in some new staff to bolster and replace some of our, our former staff. So tonight, I'd like to introduce Angel Krumger Marshall. She's one of our public health nurses. She was actually in the video you watched. She, on her second day of employment here, she was vaccinating individuals in our community right out in our foyer. She works in our maternal and child health program, seeing families and helping young kids get the best start in life. So Angel?
Can you hear me all?
Yes, we can. Good evening, welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having me, I appreciate it. I got into public health because I enjoy helping people every day with their day-to-day lives. Their perspective allows me to kind of think beyond my normal life. I absolutely love taking care of the families and helping them with the health choices and answering questions and getting them connected to the resources that they need and hopefully helping with other future vaccine events. I live in Coon Rapids, so, not in Bloomington, but pretty far, I suppose I should say. We, I have a couple children. They are eight and 16, and we like to go biking, walk, and just be outdoors. We love being outdoors.
Well, welcome, Angel. Very happy to have you on board. Look forward to meeting you in person. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So our next new employee would be Esther Mawangi. Esther joins us with some pretty extensive experience working in the community, most recently with the Minnesota Department of Health. She is our ship coordinator, so she helps run our statewide health improvement program partnership through Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield. Esther?
Thank you, Nick. I am excited to be here. I've lived and grew up in Bloomington and actually attended Oak Grove Middle School and Bloomington Kennedy, so I'm happy to be serving the city of Bloomington, Richfield, and Edina. Thank you.
And thank you, and knowing just how important the ship program is in our community, across three communities that we serve, I'm glad to have you on board and glad to have you guiding that, because as I said, such an important, important program throughout our community.
Thank you, excited to be here.
Great, thanks much.
Colton Anderson, another one of our new employees, he joins us to, to help work a new position, where he is helping run some of our accreditation, performance management, quality improvement, and our community health assessment and improvement work. He comes to us from another local health department here in, in Minnesota, and recently joined us and has jumped right in on our reaccreditation planning.
Everyone, hi, thank you, yes, happy to be here, excited to, to reaccreditation work, work on our community health assessment improvement planning, and I'm familiar with the work and excited to keep going and do it with the city of Bloomington.
Great, very happy to have you on board, Colton. Thank you for, for your important work, and look forward to, to meeting you in person very soon. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Laura Ernst is another one of our public health nurses. She joins us with a wealth of experience serving pediatric populations. So she's working in our WIC program and supporting our disease prevention and control activities. Laura?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Laura.
Oh, good, thanks, good evening. Thanks for having me. Yeah, so I have been a nurse for over 10 years, most recently in care coordination, but my extensive background was in pediatrics. And I absolutely am thrilled to be here, and everyone has been absolutely wonderful, and I really look forward to continuing working in public health.
Well, thank you, glad to have you on board. And again, the important program that you're working with WIC, I know just how important the Women Infant and Children program is throughout the community. So, thank you much, and I'm, and I'm glad we were able to get you connected this week. I think we ran into a, a little affu last week, so I'm glad we were able to get you connected this week.
Yes, thank you so much.
And then we have Lee Yang. So Lee joined our team. And then we have Lee Yang. So Lee joined our team to do some specific COVID work. She comes to us from the VA with a great research background and public participation experience. She's going to help us really document a lot of what we did well, what we can improve on, and make sure our response is better the next time we have to do something like this.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the kind introduction and having me tonight. I live in St. Paul, but Bloomington has always been a second home to me, so I'm super excited. And I feel very blessed to be a part of this team. And in the next few months, I will just be helping with the emergency preparedness division to just listen and collect everyone's stories and experiences to keep improving health for everybody.
Well, thank you. Thanks for being with us. And again, an important role here trying to collect the data on those stories that we've learned over the past couple of years. Very important. So glad we could be doing that and making sure that we have that information available. Lee, welcome. Look forward to meeting you in person soon. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, and thank you and welcome to Angel, Esther, Colton, Lee, and Laura. Glad to have you all onboard. Thank you much. Item six on our agenda is our consent business. And I believe Councilmember Nelson has our consent agenda tonight. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I did not hear from the city manager that anyone had any hold, so let me know if you do. All right. With that being the case, I will move items 6.1 through 6.5.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Coulter to accept our consent business, items 6.1 through 6.5. Hearing no further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Moving on on our agenda, item seven, which is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. Three items on this tonight, and the first being item 7.1, which is a resolution awarding the sale of general obligation CIP Fund Bonds Series 2022A. We have Lori Economy Scholler, our CFO, with us this evening. Good evening, Ms. Scholler.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The presentation will be up in a moment. There we go. So Mayor and Council, this morning at 10 o'clock, we were in the investment market. We have Elizabeth Bergman from Baker Tilly, Terry Heaton from Baker Tilly, and then Julie Eddington, our aud attorney, is online. Should you have questions from them? First up will be a slide on the interest rates. And Elizabeth Bergman will join us and just talk us a little bit about the interest rates that she sees in the market and where things are going. So Elizabeth?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm very pleased to be with you.
Good evening.
Thank you. I don't think I'm going to surprise anybody here by saying interest rates are going up. I think if you pick up a newspaper or listen to the radio or TV, you'll know that. The municipal market is no different. We've seen interest rates go up anywhere from 100 basis points or 1% to 1.3% over since 2022. So a lot of increases in the market. That said, I think it's important to think about those interest rates in context. What we were seeing at the beginning of the year are some of the lowest rates we've had in the last, say, 50 years. So while interest rates have increased, we're still well below average interest rates, looking at the municipal market. And you know, there's a fair disparity there. Looking at, back at Bloomington's interest rates in particular, it's very notable that in 2018, you all sold a deal that's not unsimilar to the one that you sold today, and the interest rate was almost 100 basis points higher. So it's just a reminder that for the last four, you know, four-ish years, things have been unusually low. So with that, today's race, and I don't want to steal your thunder, Lori, because you guys got great rates, but I do want to just give you a little context. We have been following the market and working with Lori and her team to make sure that we're aware of what's happening in the market. We had a conference call on Friday looking at last week, which was actually a pretty brutal week for interest rates, and projected rates that were a little over 3%. But what we came in today was lower than that. Again, I'm not going to steal your thunder, but good news on that front. And I guess the other thought that's important is just that the consensus expectation is that interest rates will continue to climb, given that you all have significant borrowing plans for the, I shouldn't call them significant, but you have borrowing plans with the PIR and the sales tax bonds coming this fall. We'll continue to speak with your finance team and try to put together the best strategy to watch interest rates, but make sure that the city gets its needs met. Happy to answer questions, but most importantly, just want to say congratulations. It was a really wonderful sale today. And I think that that really, another point that I wanted to make, really reflects the very good name of Bloomington and the market. Like I said, we came in lower than what we expected on Friday, and that's in part because Bloomington's spectacular name, and then of course, also the three triple As that make the market very interested in buying Bloomington debt. I'm glad I didn't forget to say that. Happy to answer questions and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words also. Council, any questions on this? Councilmember Lohman?
Well, I think that for the public to try to understand that, I think it's important to talk a little bit, Mayor, about that difference in the AAA and the AA, so that taxpayers really understand what the advantages are, in fact, of having that rating that we've maintained for so many years. So I just wonder if we could comment a little bit about that so that folks understand the significance of that.
Sure. I mean, I think one thing that's very clear is that there were six bids on the bonds today, which is quite a few bids. So having the three triple As means that more investors are qualified to buy your bonds and interested in buying your bonds. And as a result, the more bidders you get, the more competitive the interest rate environment is. It's worth noting that the winning bid, okay, I am stealing your thunder now, Lori. I tried, I tried. Was 2946. The next bid down was 2947. So when you get that many bids, you're getting into that thin of a slice. And like I say, the AAA, pretty much all investors can buy it, so it really widens your investor market. It also will get you a lower interest rate. You know, obviously depending what you're comparing to, about 5, 10 basis points. So it's meaningful in terms of the amount of interest you're paying on your borrowing, both because the market sees it as higher quality and more likely to be repaid, and you also bring more investors to the table. So both of those things.
Thank you for that explanation. I just think that even though it gets much more complicated now, but I think that's as succinct as we can be. Thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thanks for the opportunity. When you think about, you know, the rest of the year and your comment about continuing to rise, can you give us kind of a forecast of, you know, what you all are thinking that might look like? We're talking five basis points, 10 basis points. How do you feel like the market's moving in that regard?
Well, what I see last week was a little brutal in the market. It was partly because the Fed chairman came out and said that he thought that we need to be raising interest rates more quickly than we were. So typically speaking, people think of the Fed as raising interest rates about 25 basis points a time. I think that increasingly, there's a consensus in the market that we'll be looking at some 50 basis points raises. So I think the expectation is maybe 150 basis points over the course of the year. It could be that high. But obviously, there are many things that play into that. There are geopolitical issues. I was going to say there's COVID, but the market seems to have stopped in being spooked by COVID, frankly. But certainly, you know, the Fed will consider, continue to consider events, and the municipal market will respond, you know, in kind.
Thank you.
Then we'll move on to the next slide. Am I done?
Yes, you're done. Thanks, Elizabeth.
So as Elizabeth mentioned, we are a AAA city. We have the three triple As, and our first AAA was back in 1998, 2000, and then Fitch was the last one in 2004. So we're coming up on 20 years with three triple As. And there's 40 other municipal governments at the city level, so 19,500 across the country, and only 40 of us have the three triple As. So on the next slide, we have a credit rating report from S&amp;P this time. What I do normally is, once a year, we do all three rating agencies, usually four, our permanent improvement revolving funds for our road improvements in the fall with all three ratings. And just to keep the price of the cost of issuance down, I only do one rating on the rest of the ratings, bond issues, because I'm a little frugal being the CFO, so I'm only going to do one. So S&amp;P did come in, and again, across the board, we did very strong economy. They highlighted the city's location where we're at in the metro, very strong management with a good counsel and senior staff, positive budget variances. They looked through all of our activities there. We had well over an hour conversation with S&amp;P. And strong debt, our ratios for debt to per capita is still really low. So they will watch that, and we will, and we march that out a couple of years for them so that they could see just on the payment management or par capital, what that would look like. And it was still very low compared to most other cities. Next slide, please. Fire Station 4, or what these bonds were sold for. It's starting to get underway. Things, and the fencing has been put up. I believe demolitions either started or will start soon. They anticipate one year to build. Steel was ordered six months ago, so hopefully this summer, the steel will come in because of just the supply-demand pieces. So that will be underway for these. So it's a capital improvement project bond. And so, right now, giving you just some of the histories on some of the numbers or the dates that we've brought information to the council over the last nine months. With the receipt of bond proceeds will be a month from today. So that was in your packet. And just to get to the summary of the activities will be the next slide. So initially, we asked the council for approval of $12,835,000. Our final amount for the bonds this evening is $11,975,000. Elizabeth did say six bidders. I had counted seven, and that was because one of the bidders to their desk people called in. So it was really six bidders, seven responses. These are 20-year bonds. The final tick that we had, or the estimated true interest cost that we had looked at well over a month ago was 2.87. And as Elizabeth noted, the market has changed. And as of Friday, it was going to be 3.12. And again, with the premium impact, it's 2.96. So the premium that was paid was just under $600,000. So we use the premium to bring down the bond amount, so we're not issuing as much and paying on that premium over the 20-year period. And then we will, project costs for Station 4 is $12,500,000. And then cost of issuance, the largest piece of that is the capitalized interest, and we'll use the fire pension fund for that $341,000. And then just the financing costs for S&amp;P, the bond council underwriter, for the $66,000. Next slide. And we'll be asking council to make motion to accept a low bidder and issue $11,975,000 of bonds.
Thank you. Council questions? I guess my first question, the company that had two people calling, were they bidding against each other?
No, I think, I believe they consistently have two desks call in.
I got it. Got it. Council, any questions on this? Any comments? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you mind going back one slide for me? Just because I couldn't remember what you said. I'm curious about this premium. Can you give us some context? Is it very similar to when I pay points on a refi? Is it very much like that?
I will ask Terry Heaton, our municipal advisor.
It sounded, I just don't, I don't want to assume, but it sounded a lot like something I might do in my own life. That's why I was curious.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the underwriters bid both coupon rates, which is the interest rate per maturity on a bond, and then they also pay a price for the bond. And in this case, we offered 12 and a half million. They paid in excess of that. And so they pay, and the two of them, what they pay for your bonds, along with the coupon rate, are all calculated into becoming the true interest cost. But what you can do is, in order to balance out so that the low bid, they can have slightly higher coupon rates, but they pay a higher price for your bonds, and that becomes premium. So when you use those to buy down your bonds, that becomes your yield. So the two together give you your interest rate, but it also allows you to reduce your bond issue because they're paying you cash over and above the asking price for your bonds.
And how does that equate to the points on a mortgage?
How does it equate to the point? Thank you for that.
Is it a decent analogy, or am I completely off, is my question more than anything?
I think, I think it could be considered the same. You're buying down the interest rate, and that's exactly what they're doing with this. So in that way, yes, I had to kind of think that through about the mortgage, but you're right.
Right. Yeah. Just so that folks in the audience who are residents, who probably have refinanced their house more than once over the course of the last four years, we've all done something like that, and it sounds very similar to me. That's why I wanted to check.
Yes.
I appreciate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for that explanation. Council, anything additional? Comments, questions on this? Well, this is very good news, obviously, especially considering where we were at the end of last week. So I'm glad to hear that. Council, if there are no questions, I would look for action on this. Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I'd be happy to move to adopt a resolution awarding the sale of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds, Series 2022A, in the principal amount of $11.9 million, fixing their form and specification, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to award the sale of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds.
Mayor, may I ask, was that $11,900,000 or $11,975,000?
As you've said, it's the 11.9 million. $11,975,000.
Thank you.
Principal amount of. Everybody clear on that? Any further questions by the council? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you for my-
Thank you very much. Thanks. Item 7.2 on our agenda is a public hearing, our first public hearing of the evening, this being for the vacation of public drainage, utility sidewalk, bikeway, storm sewer street and road easements located at 4501 West 100 and 2nd Street. Mr. Keel, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is related to the replating of the Olson Middle School property by the school district. This was a plat that you approved back in August of last fall. The release of these easements will be reconstituted in the new plat when it's filed. And so it's kind of rather routine in nature. It's a normal action as part of replating. With that, we recommend approval.
Council, any questions of Mr. Keel on this? No questions? Very good. Then I will open this public hearing. This is a public hearing. This is item 7.2, a public hearing on the vacation of public drainage, utility sidewalk, bikeway, storm sewer, street, and road easements located at 4501 West 100 and 2nd Street. Anyone in the chambers wish to speak to item 7.2 as part of the public hearing? Leah, do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 7.2 this evening? Leah, are you there?
Actually, we currently have no one on the phone line. You may continue.
Thank you, Leah. Last call. Anyone wishing to speak to item 7.2? Council, seeing no one coming forward and no one on the phone wishing to comment on item 7.2, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Lohman, to close the public hearing on item 7.2. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Council, unless there are any questions or comments or concerns about this, Councilmember DeLisandro?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, Mr. Keel. I should have mentioned it earlier. You went so fast and were moving through this agenda. I didn't get my notes out in time. I apologize. Just had a real quick question. I don't, I didn't understand the plat very well, and I wasn't on the council when you guys approved this. So if you don't mind, the section for stormwater and everything that's in that kind of southwest corner, I guess it is, of the plat, if I'm looking at it right, that, it being vacated, does that mean that it's not going to be replaced, or is it going to be moved? Like, is it going to end up in some other area of the property?
So really, the way to describe this is that there's a number of different ways of describing encumbrances or easements and property. This property was formerly a Meets and Bounds description, kind of an old-fashioned way of keeping track of properties. And through the development that's happening on that site, the city requires them to go through a plating, which is kind of a more modern way of keeping track of the properties. So the pond easement that you're talking about was memorialized as an actual document in the past that sat on top of that old Meets and Bounds description. In the new plat, it'll be part of the plat itself. So the size and the shape and everything will be exactly the same as the old one. It'll just be memorialized in the plat rather than a separate document.
Super helpful. Thank you. Thanks.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. Council, I'd look for action on this. Councilmember Martin?
Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion. Let's see here. I will move that we approve the, apologies, I'm one ahead here. I will move that we approve the, apologies, I'm one ahead here. I'll move that, in the interest of the public, to adopt an ordinance to approve the vacation of public drainage, utility sidewalk, bikeway, storm sewer street and road easements within and adjacent to the property located at 4501 West 102nd.
Second.
Motion by Counselmember Martin, second by Counselmember Carter, to adopt the ordinance approving the vacation of the public utilities adjacent to the property located at 4501 West 102nd Street. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item 7.3 on our agenda is our second and final public hearing of the evening. This is a public hearing to approve our 2020-2024 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan substantial amendment, and to approve the 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan. And we have with us this evening Erica Coleman, our HRA Administrator. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation to walk through this for you. I am requesting the public hearing, as well as approval for the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan Amendment. This is our five-year plan, that we did have one approved, we had this one approved in 2019, and I am proposing amending strategies and goals, as well as amending Section 108 loan guarantee uses. The reason this is coming before you now is because with the pandemic and the additional CDBG/CV funding we received, we amended our previous five-year plan that ended in 2019. So I am proposing that we amend our plan, our strategies and goals going forward to reflect the priorities of the city, as well as the Section 108 loan guarantee uses. The City Council did pass a resolution in 2019 for this. When we put it in the plan, we left out two words, economic development. And so HUD says it's a substantial amendment to add those two words as an eligible activity. Next slide, please. So, the strategies and goals, as proposed, will be high-level to include preserve and create multifamily rental opportunities, preserve and create single-family homeownership, preserve and create housing opportunities for homelessness populations, education outreach and services, neighborhood revitalization, economic development as a whole for community development block grant uses, and administration. Next slide. Section 108 loan guarantee. Like I said, as proposed, the activities that support affordable housing development, including real property acquisition, rehabilitation or site improvements to property, housing rehabilitation, economic development activities, public facilities, and slum and blight remediation. These are all eligible activities under HUD, Section 108. Next slide. So the 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan, we are on the proper timeline for bringing this forward. In consolidating, checking with HUD and Hennepin County, because we are a part of the Consortium for Home, they said we can bring this forward at the same time, the substantial amendment to the consolidated plan, as well as the annual action plan. So based on the proposed strategies and goals in the substantial amendment, we are also including those in the annual action plan, and the estimated grant amount is the same as 2021, $465,132. At this time, we do not expect any additional funding, so we have budgeted based on that. So we would include high-level homeowner rehabilitation assistance, including lead-based paint activity. Normally, this activity comes before you as single-family rehab, and then a separate activity for lead-based paint, however, lead-based paint is used for the single-family rehab. Develop homes for homeownership. This activity normally comes before you as WALT, West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust. I am proposing that we use the category and not just an entity, therefore, we have other opportunities. And then, public service, senior services. This normally comes before you as Senior Community Services Home Program. Again, proposing that we not bring forward just the entity, but the activity as a whole. And then, in general, Fair Housing Implementation Council, this is the $5,000 annually that we provide for fair housing activities, and then administration. Next slide. Here is the budget. As proposed, we do have a carryover, estimated carryover from 2021. For homeowner rehabilitation assistance, as you know, the single-family home improvement loan program was paused for a period of time, so there is a carryover of funding from the 2021-2022 budget. Develop homes for homeownership. We normally allocate $150,000 to this activity. $75,000 is currently unspent. That usually goes for at least two homes to be rehabilitated and sold, resold for affordable homeownership opportunities. And then, we have calculated in here an estimated of program income. So for homeowner rehabilitation assistance, the program income is the loans, the repayments. It's always an estimate, so at this time, we're estimating about $500,000 in repayments for the 2022-2023 program year. So for the 2022-2023 budget estimate for homeowner rehabilitation assistance, we are estimating $1.193,378,000 for that program as a whole. And then for developing homes for homeownership, $225,000, adding the same $150,000 that we currently add to it, with no other proposed changes from last year's budget. Next slide. Just wanted to provide you the timeline. Right now, this is open for written public comment period. It opened on the 17th of March, and it was published in the Bloomington-Richfield Sun. The HRA Board did review and was in support of on the 22nd of March. We are here this evening for the public hearing, as well as council approval. On the 12th, Hennepin County Board will have their public hearing, because again, we're a part of the consolidated, excuse me, the Consortium for Home. And then, the end of the written public comment period is on April 30th, and on May 17th, we will submit the plan as approved to HUD, and we expect to hear back with a new fiscal year starting July 1 from HUD. Next slide. So again, it is a public hearing this evening, and then I have a suggested motion for you, but I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. I'm sure we've got a number of questions here. The one that I had, obviously, you know that you mentioned developing homes for ownership, and obviously, that's a priority for this council. And you mentioned other entities, other possibilities beyond WALT. Are you in a position to share what your thinking might be on that, or some other possibilities or options?
Yes. So the thinking is, is that we have longstanding relationships with other nonprofits such as Habitat for Humanity, or other PPL, other entities that do have experience working with CDBG dollars, but have also developed using federal funds here in Bloomington for single-family homeownership. And so, the thought process is to look into our other opportunities and partnerships that we've previously had.
Very good. Good, thank you. Looking forward to hearing more about that. Counsel questions? Counselmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I know very often, at least the state level, when there are grant programs, there are typically limits on, whether it's a percentage or a dollar figure, on how much can be spent on administration. Is that the case with CDBG funding as well?
Thank you. That is the case, and so reflected in the budget. Sorry, thank you, Mayor. Counselmember Coulter. Yes, that is the case, reflected in the budget. On the PowerPoint slide showed an estimated, so, excuse me, administration at $96,000. Let's see, $96,754. That's within the 20% that is allowed for administration.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Additional questions? Counselmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Ms. Coleman. I'm just curious, you've been with us for about a year now, right? Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I can see the, reflected in here, some of the reorganization that you're doing. I think it's wonderful. Thanks for bringing your skill set to that. I'm curious your thoughts on the consortium. I got the sense, potentially, when I was reading through the packet, that it constrains us, in your opinion, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm curious as to whether or not there's, you know, movement there, or some work that we as a council can do in support of your work with Hennepin County, or anything like that, to do, to make any kind of improvements in there, if you feel like there are some constraints on you as a result of being a part of that consortium.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselmember DeLisandro, members of the City Council. I'm sorry if that came across as I felt constrained. I actually am new to learning about the consortium with Hennepin County, and so I have been in consultation with some consultants that we have that can bring forward more information for me, to understand different pathways that we can take. But as of right now, I do not feel constrained. I think I'm just trying to understand, CDBG's not a part of the consortium, but home is a part of the consortium? So, no, I do not feel constrained.
Okay, great. Well, I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Mayor.
Counsel, additional questions? I don't see any hands going up. So I will open this public hearing on item 7.3, which is approval of our 2020-2024 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan substantial amendment, and the 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 7.3 this evening?
We currently have no one on the phone line, sir. You may continue.
Thank you. Preemptive strike there. We have no one on the phone lines. Last call, anyone in the council chambers? Seeing no one coming forward, counsel, I will look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 7.3.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselmember Coulter, second by Counselmember Loman, to close the public hearing on item 7.3. No further counsel discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Counsel, questions? Comments? Anything additional on this? If not, I would look for action. Counselmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve the 2020-2024 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Consolidated Plan substantial amendment, and the 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan and Budget.
Second. Motion by Counselmember Coulter, second by Counselmember Martin, to approve the documents as stated. We'll put it that way, and we'll, to approve the documents as stated, for item 7.3. Hearing no further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Looks good. Thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing as this moves forward. Thank you. Moving on to item 8 on our agenda, our organizational business. And item 8.1 is an information presentation and some discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Thanks for reminding me. Leah, we are done with our public input for this evening. You can, you can take the rest of the night off. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a great night.
Thank you. You too. Thank you for the reminder, Counselmember Coulter. Now we will move to item 8.1, as an information and discussion item. This on 700 American Boulevard. It's an update regarding the RFP and the timeline, and I believe, again, once again, this is Ms. Coleman.
Thank you. I do have a brief agenda for you, just so we can stay on track, because I am asking for some input. So, thank you. This evening, I'm bringing forward 700 American with a brief overview of the parcel history, a review of the development objectives, evaluation criteria, and timeline as proposed for RFP, and then specific questions that I was looking for responses to. Should any objectives be added or removed? Should any evaluation criteria be added or removed? And do you agree with the proposed timeline? Next slide, please. So, just to jog memory, but I think everybody knows where 700 American is located. This is the parcel highlighted in green, and behind it is the REI parking lot and building, and to the left is top-line federal credit union. This parcel by itself is 1.85 acres. Next slide. So, very briefly, this parcel was created in 2005, 700-900 American. 2007, the city owns the properties and asks the Port Authority to manage an RFP process. 900 American was sold directly to top-line federal credit union. 700 American was sold to a development company. In 2012, the city repurchased 700 American as the developer was unable to meet the proposal and the timeline, timeframe for the development. In 2016, November, to be exact, council approved issuance of an RFP. There were 30-plus developers and/or brokers interested, however, only one proposal was received, and it was for a new health market concept. In 2017 to 2018, staff worked diligently with the health market concept. Redevelopment agreement was not executed. In 2019, staff re-engaged with the health market developer, and no agreement could be reached. Next slide. So in 2019, the project was moved to the HRA for redevelopment, but the city still owns the land. 2020, HRA staff engaged a consultant to conduct developer roundtables. Out of that, some things emerged. Highest and best use for the area, that this is a 50-to-100-year decision for an asset to the city, and that challenges identified, were identified to achieve a larger, more signature development. Therefore, in 2021, special TIF legislation request, was requested, excuse me, and approved, with the goals of maximizing development on vacant parcels, removing barriers by providing funding for burying of overhead power lines and transformers, develop a vertically mixed-use building or buildings using city's affordable housing policy, and provide public assistance for the shortest length of time. Next slide. So, here we have the updated. I wanted to show you that yellow line are the power lines, running along the north end of the 700 American property, and really becomes a barrier to being able to do any type of land assembly or any larger development. Next slide. So, before you, I am proposing a simple timeline here. Quarter 1, which we're in right now, March. The HRA Board did hear this on the 22nd and did provide some feedback. We are here this evening for City Council to provide some input and feedback. With the input and feedback garnered, plan is to finalize an RFP between now and the end of April, with a release of the RFP between May and June, and then a proposal and review and selection with RFPs coming back between July and August. The reason the timeframe is like that is we would like to hold the RFP open for seven weeks, to allow for a greater opportunity for developers to respond. The proposal and review selection would include staff review and recommendation, HRA Board review and support, and City Council review and approval, and in that order. Next slide. So, proposed development objectives. In 2016, when the City Council approved the RFP, they approved it at a minimum purchase price of $2 million. I'm proposing leaving the minimum purchase price at $2 million, but being clear, it's a minimum. So it's just the bottom line. The project, we would be looking for multi-story, higher intensity developments, a non-retail development, development activities that both Lindell and American, that activates both Lindell and American and does not turn its back on the corner, building placement near the corner, requiring high-quality construction, exterior material, architecture, and a sustainable development. We are also including burying overhead power lines and transformers, and encouraging to work with owners of adjacent property. And it's phrased that way because we don't own it, so we can't really require it, but we would like to encourage developers to work with owners of adjacent properties for a signature development that possibly would incorporate more land than just 700 American. And then a requirement to close within 12 months of the proposal approval, so we can get a development going. Next slide. Evaluation criteria would be based on three topics. The project, so the quality of the design materials, exterior materials, and other environmental and/or sustainability standards. The extent to which the proposed development incorporates and more efficiently uses the adjacent vacant parcel, and excess parking at the REI site, if available. Market and financial feasibility, and if it can be started and completed in a timely manner. And then, public benefits to provide by the development. The developer, we would be looking at experience and capacity, both financial and organizational. And then the objectives. If housing, and we phrase if housing because we would like to see it, but it may not be housing, so if housing, the degree to which the proposal meets or exceeds the city's affordable housing goals. The purchase price of the city-owned land, as you recall, I'm only proposing a minimum of $2 million. Requirement of additional public investment, so what are they asking for that they need? And then the economic impact, which would be the estimated taxable market value of a completed project, employment potential, et cetera. Next slide. So, the questions again. Should any of the objectives be added or removed? Should any evaluation criteria be added or removed? And do you agree with the proposed timeline? And so, Mike, if you could help me out and go back to the objective slide, I can stand for any questions, comments, input, looking to gather here.
Counsel, questions on this? Counselmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, sorry, I'm battling a cold, or I'm getting over a cold, so, excuse my voice. I'm just wondering... Um, I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit more around what you mean when you say signature development?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Carter, members of the council. So, a signature development, um, as proposed by the consultant, which was Ellers, that has, um, brought forward information. It could be a larger mixed-use, um, development that really activates the area. That is the entrance into Bloomington. And so we really would like, well, it's one of the entrances into Bloomington. We really would like to see something that really says, wow, welcome to Bloomington. We're the best. We're here, and we love that you're coming into our city. So, signature in terms of that, think big, think broad. What could that mean? But also meeting the needs that the city council has set as priorities for the city.
Counsel, additional questions? So, just curious, in, in your mind, other than the fact that we're out of a worldwide pandemic, what, what's changed from two years ago to now? Do you think that will change a developer's perspective or view of what could possibly go at this intersection?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I think one of the big things that have changed is the spotlight on Bloomington. And the spotlight on Bloomington, um, due to the leadership, due to the people that are here, but also due to the opportunity housing ordinance. And the fact that where we are located, um, in the metro, it's really needed. People are wanting to stay here, they're wanting to move here, and we have the tools and incentives available for them to take part in it. And so we get interest from developers, and we also have the opportunity to diversify our developer pool from what it looked like two to five years ago. So I think that's what's changed. I'm very hopeful.
And thank you for that.
Hope on the horizon.
I've heard that before. Well done. Uh, second question, now, one of your bullets there is sustainable development. Um, measured how?
So, thank you for that question. I know in consultation with the consultant, um, we were looking at possibly lead requirements or, uh, different requirements around a sustainable development, such as, um, how the, again, 50-to-100-year decision here, how the property could hold up, and again, how does it align with the priorities? And the Sustainability Commission has set for some priorities. So, how does it align with that?
Very good. And then the final question, then, I'll let others jump in if I could. Uh, assuming you've thought this through in the, how it relates both to the 494 redesign and the work going on there, but also with our friends to the north in Richfield, they, they've had a re, major redo of Lindale Avenue over the past decade or so, and as it feeds into Bloomington, it's, um, I wish we could, we could match their outstanding redo of Lindale Avenue. So, uh, just your thoughts on how those, how this project works together with those two aspects?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a catalyst, um, for that, and I would be looking to my public works colleagues to really help with the review of that and, um, how that project would, would interact with that. Um, I know there's, um, importance with the access for REI, and if there's a development that is being done at 700 American, how does that incorporate the access to, I'm not Glenn Markergard, so I don't use the same terminology, but how people could enter, enter and exit on that front-end road there?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Counsel, questions, comments? Are we happy with the objectives? Are we looking for more? I see Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't know if this is on the objectives or a different part, but I'll just jump in. Um, you had the thing where you said if housing. The one thing I would add is if there's any type of way to have a preference for owner-occupied housing, if that is a possibility to do there. I know that's difficult in multifamily, but I'll, I'll continue to bring it up. Um, and then you talked about the, um, underutilized parking and a vacant property adjacent to that. Is there any consideration of, uh, city helping with structured parking in order to, uh, help with REI? I think there's the hockey place there as well, and, and this new development, and how all those come together in order to intensify that use?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Nelson. I can check into that about structured parking. Uh, that is a, a first for me, but that's also because REI owns so much of that adjacent parcel.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. You can add me to the owner-occupied. I don't know how it's possible to do it, but I'd sure love to see it. So just kind of looking at, at this site, you know, we talked about burying the, uh, the power lines. Is there any, any concern at all with flooding there at all, in that, in that particular corridor at all? I know that on the, on the freeway that there's a flooding zone. There, is there any, I, I can't imagine staff would recommend burying it if there would be, but I just wanted to ask the question just in case, um, with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lohman. I have not heard of a concern with flooding, but I can double-check on that for you.
That'd be, that'd be great to just, uh, because we'd hate to get in there. I can't imagine there would be. And then, um, I, I'm just curious, um, and I, I'm pretty sure this isn't, isn't possible, but I figure I'd be, I might as well ask anyways, right? Uh, in terms of, you know, is there any TIF available there? I, I can't imagine there is, but, uh, given the way that the site is, but, uh, is that a possibility of maybe putting together, uh, I know if you, you know, REI would not be an example of that, but, you know, that, that would hurt it. But if there was a couple of, uh, uh, parcels that could be put together and we could do something with that, I just wonder if there is something that would make this more enticing.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lohman, you're right on point. So with the special TIF legislation that we did receive, there is eligibility, eligibility to use TIF at this site as well as using TIF for the burying of the power lines and the transformers, as it is a very costly, um, task that we are looking for the developer to take on. So, yes.
So, I mean, given that, I guess my last question that I would ask then is, so, I mean, you just sort of alluded to it, but I just want to hear you say it, maybe in a different way. But, you know, what, what we're, you know, we've put this out this before, and we've kind of seen this kind of not get to where we want, you know, get to the finish line at all. What do we think, we don't, you know, I mean, I, I like what we have here, so if I answer all three of your questions, you know, gosh, that looks good to me. I'm not, I'm not in the real estate business. So, um, I, I would answer, yeah, the staff has put forward something, but, you know, why do you think we didn't get something rolling there? I know top line was one, one piece, and then there was, you know, another iteration of that. And do you feel like what we've got moving forward is, is, you know, given that what we've learned from that? Here's, you know, this is gonna, this is gonna work this time around.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Lohman. As I said, hope is on the horizon. And so I do believe that, uh, the, one of the bigger differences is timing. It, it's really timing. Um, the last time we put a RFP out was in 2016. Uh, and so we did do developer roundtables and got, you know, more information, which is what led us to do the special TIF legislation request. And so I think it comes down to timing and opportunity, and I think using, um, the relationships that we have grown over the years here in Bloomington and with the staff of the community development, I think we have a very good opportunity to bring forward a developer that can get this done.
Mr. Verugui, had something to add here?
Yep, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Lohman, to the question of flooding in the area, we have historically had flooding further to the west on either side of 35W along American Boulevard. Um, those are really low depressions in that area, and, uh, I'll look over at our public works director to make sure that I'm not speaking out of turn, but I'm, I'm relatively confident that the, uh, American Lindale, um, uh, elevations are not at a, at a point where we're likely to see any sort of flooding.
Thanks for that, that clarification. Yeah, so just, you know, we talk about sustainability, you'd hate to, you know, have flooding and then other issues, so.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, so, when I look at the, um, when I look at this area, I'm, I'm struck by a couple of things. One, you know, from a, from an access-to-highway perspective, you know, from a transit perspective, it all looks good. We can think about things like, um, you know, public transit. I would, I would be fine if we didn't go down the, let's build a parking ramp, because I like not parking ramps, but, you know, whatever. We'll, we'll get, we'll get to that. But this isn't like, to me anyway, um, especially when we're talking about owner-occupied stuff, I, you know, it feels to me like it's a, a place where we, we would be putting folks, if I can be blunt, who, you know, are already potentially at a disadvantage, uh, into a, an area that's not necessarily the healthiest of areas for them, both from an, an air quality perspective and, and things of that pers, you know, that, that idea, if we did housing here. And I, I, um, obviously, we have to come up with ways to find, you know, spots for housing, and I agree with that. But I wouldn't want us to be necessarily, um, putting our, putting a group of people into a situation that's a, um, you know, potentially, um, something we are trying to get ourselves not to do i- i- in other areas of the city, for example. So, when we think about, um, our equity questions around, um, the, the east side of Bloomington, and whether we're talking about sidewalks and that kind of thing, or we're talking about some of the Sustainability Commission's work on GIS plating and the fact that we have heat zones, and we have flooding planes, we have all these things, and of course, the environmental quality of the air near our freeways and our industrial zones. What, what are you, what are you thinking about when you think about that? And, and, and is it, is it a, a consideration? Is there, you know, are there some of the things that we want to ask these folks to do, uh, around even air exchangers and other stuff like that, really intended to kind of make it the best possible, um, environmental outcome for folks who might live in what I consider a, you know, I don't want to call it industrial, but certainly commercial area, very walkable if we build it right, of course, but also, um, you know, kind of, kind of on its own, you know, across from the hotel there, um, you know, kind of on its own in terms of, of, of a, a housing area. If that makes sense? I know I blathered a little bit, sorry. Just philosophically, I'm wondering where your head's at there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember DeLisandro. Um, so, yes, I think that we can look into certain things about air quality and, and building and sustainability there. Um, but where my head is at is providing opportunity and options. There is housing right across the freeway in Richfield. There's townhomes right there. So it may not be housing right there in Bloomington, but there is housing in this area. And I think that it is a prime location, and that if we allow for a mixed income, whether rental, ownership, however it can happen, we'll have to look into it. Um, people have the opportunity to make the choice, and then it's not leaving anybody out. And so then they understand where they are, and we are, have a public meeting here. We can be upfront and honest and transparent about the different things that go into that, and the noise, and if there is an air quality issue, but they have the opportunity to stay in Bloomington, move to Bloomington, and actually be able to afford it. So my head is, is in the space of just options.
Councilmember Lohman?
You know, um, Mayor, uh, given what Councilmember DeLisandro said, uh, about, uh, really almost like, I almost hear this, health and all policies. And so I guess if I had to re-ask the question, um, is, you know, if we had to put that, or not have to, but if it, if that was, you know, we've got sustainability already in here, but is, I, I just assumed that it was in here because we, you know, we have that across that, but how does that fit into this policy? The health and all policies. I know we're working on that, so it's kind of, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of a trick bag, and I'm asking you to do something we haven't really defined yet, but, uh...
Yeah, so, thank you, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Lohman. I was going to say I have to review the health and all policy when it comes about, to be able to say how it might possibly fit within this.
Mr. Verugui.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Lohman, I'm glad you asked that question, because as the council is aware, you know, how we, how we look at, uh, new development, new policies, uh, new activity through the various lens that we have established, one of the conversations that we've been having at a staff level over the last few months is, uh, around this concept of integrated work plans and, uh, making sure that our folks who are, are leading the effort in the reviewing things through the lens of health are, uh, connecting and, and, uh, interacting with the folks who are looking at things through the lens of sustainability. And, um, so when, once we hit our stride here, I don't have a promise on delivery date, except that, you know, this is a work in progress, and once we hit our stride, I expect that you're going to see, uh, frequently that we will be, um, bringing forward those different elements when, uh, issues are being put in front of the council on a regular basis.
So, um, I know last week, uh, we saw, and one of the, uh, agenda items, at the end of it, we had kind of an evaluation of, from the lens of equity. So what I, what I expect to see as a council member, or what I'm expecting, or what I'm thinking I'm going to see is that when this RFP kind of comes back to the council, you know, if staff gets it done by that time, uh, I might be able to see, you know, through both of those lenses. Is, is that a reasonable thought if we get to that point? I know that we may not by that point, because this timeframe is pretty tight, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, I think that is a reasonable expectation. And, uh, having said so on the record, I'm sure that Ms. Coleman is going to make sure that that's included, so.
She's writing it down right there. Councilmember Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And just real briefly, I, I appreciate what my colleagues have brought up, and I, I kind of think of this as an exciting opportunity, a first step towards the broader vision of the Lindale Avenue retrofit, which, once completed, will go a long way towards diversifying those uses and dealing with a lot of environmental remediation, which would help. Uh, so I guess my, my request, and I'm guessing it's something that was going to be done already, considering we're shooting for a signature project here, really swinging for the fences and use this as part of the sales pitch for other projects all the way down Lindale, and say, look what we've done, look what we can do, and to your point, we've got the tools to help you. So, I'm, I'm excited, and thank you for the work here.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one follow-up, and, and more of an idea, and I don't know if we're in the discussion period of time, if that okay?
That's, that's exactly where we're at.
So, yeah, so the, the, one of the thoughts related to that is, you know, um, as we think about the way that we award these things, I would be absolutely, um, ecstatic if we found innovation in carbon capture and things like that going on in the site. Um, it is, it is devoid of any natural space at all, and so, you know, there are lots of things that if we just give the, the plants and animals a little bit of chelp, not animals in this case, that'll just get run over, but you get my point. Let's not do that. I would hate for that to happen. But, but, you know, there's a lot of opportunity in carbon capture and, uh, and things like that that offset some of those environmental issues, and so having somebody involved in this project who can think, um, creatively on that front as well, so, you know, as we think about who we might go to RFP with, finding a couple of those innovators and asking them to, to think outside the box a little bit on this one would be great. Um, maybe that's the best way I can say what I was trying to say. A lot less words that time, sorry. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments, counsel? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, one more question. Do we know what Richfield did when it redeveloped its side of Lindale there? And what tools it used? Because like you noted, they did a nice job there. And, um, you know, being able to kind of learn from that might be helpful for our experience as well.
Mr. Verugui.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, um, I kind of jumped in front of Ms. Coleman. If you have, uh, more information than, uh, what I do in responding here, please jump in. So I'll tell you that the, over the last couple decades, you've seen a lot of development around, along the northern, uh, side of 494, and that was an intentional strategy that the city of Richfield, uh, began back in the mid-'90s. As a matter of fact, it was really, um, spurred by a, uh, federal demonstration grant that was received to convert 77th Street into a, um, reliever corridor to, uh, to try and get some of the congested traffic off of 494. And by creating that, uh, the reliever corridor, uh, it was a significant upgrade of the transportation infrastructure that also included acquiring quite a bit of property, but it made an awful lot of property available for redevelopment. And so, uh, you know, what, what happened there is, um, part and parcel of a 25-year, um, redevelopment initiative, essentially, along that entire corridor. And that includes the, uh, everything from the Best Buy, uh, campus to the, um, the office towers in the northeast quadrant of the interchange, uh, to the Lindale and, um, 494 on the front end, and includes the, the Diamond Point, um, uh, uh, freeway accesses at Lindale and at Penn, all of that was part of that 25-year plan. That's still, still going, yeah.
Anything additional? Well, I will say, uh, back in 2012, I was a, a council newbie, and we were looking at a proposal for this site for, I think it was a, a dental building, a two-story dental building. And, uh, the vision all along was similar to the vision that had been laid out, something grand, something that was a, you know, an anchor, something big and, and bold on, on Lindale and American. And it was a bit of a bruising discussion among the council, and it ultimately was a four-to-three vote to say, no, we don't want a dental spot. We don't want a dental office there. And I remember the conversation being, we'll wait for the next best one to come along. And that was in 2012, and here we are 10 years later. So personally, I am fully invested in, we, we're playing the long game now, obviously. If we're, if we're 10 years out on this, we're playing the long game. And so I am personally invested in making sure that this is a signature project, that this does spur redevelopment in the area, that this does make people realize this is a place to be, and this is what we, where, where we should be developing, and this is, look at all of Lindale Avenue and how we could... at all of Lyndale Avenue and how we could possibly redevelop that, what that could be in the city of Bloomington. So I commend you for aiming for, swinging for the fences here, because we are in this and we are in it for the long haul, and I think to settle now would be a terrible thing. That would be a disservice to all that we've waited for, for these years. So I certainly hope you're right. I have hope on the horizon as well, and I expect that you're going to be right, that we're going to see some good and exciting proposals as we move forward with this RFP. So I'm sure you'll keep us updated as we go along.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 8.2, which is our discussion about council rules of procedure, the amendments we've been talking about. Ms. Manderscheid and Mr. Verbrugge, I think, are going to lead us on this one.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, recapping last week's discussion in proposing to create a new listening session for the city council to engage with residents in a format that occurs prior to the council meetings. The council wanted to defer action until seeing sort of the guidelines or the details of what the listening session would look like. And so in your packet, you have the proposed city council listening session guidelines. What staff is recommending for discussion and consideration is that the session be a 30-minute session, which is increasing the amount of time currently from 20 minutes, that we do it in the Hague Conference Room, which is on the second floor of Civic Plaza. It's a large conference room, and that we do that from 5:45 to 6:15. In this format, it would allow the council time to transition down here into the council chambers for the regular meetings, and it also maintains a starting time of 6:30 for regular council meetings. I think one of the things that we want to make sure that we do is continue to allow enough time for the business of the council, and since the rules of procedure also have an 11 o'clock hard stop, we want to try to maintain as much time for agenda as possible. Within the listening session, it would be considered, well, it would be considered a regular meeting under the open meeting law. There'd be a quorum required to give any direction or if there are any actions taken, just like any other public meeting or meeting subject to the open meeting law. And we would also report out at the 6:30 meeting who was there and what was discussed. We would have an audio recording for the record, so if folks were interested in listening to it after the fact, they would be able to do that, that we would continue to have a call-in option to make it more accessible if folks were not able to come in and meet with the council, and that we'll have instructions and information on the agenda packet so that folks understand what the listening session is about and how to participate. One of the suggestions we're making is that we encourage people who wish to approach the council to pre-register and let us know what topic they'd like to discuss. And the reason for doing this is so we can make sure that we have the right staff resource there. If there's a specific city service issue or policy issue, that council would benefit from having staff there as a resource. The plan is that the city manager and the city attorney will always attend the listening session, and then that we would, and then we would have other staff available as our pre-registered topics would suggest. That doesn't mean that folks who do not pre-register would not be allowed to approach the council. It's just in terms of setting the expectation for whether we may be fully responsive to their questions at the time is going to be dependent on whether we have staff available knowledgeable of the topic. And then a couple other points is that, just as in this format, the mayor continues to be the presiding officer, and ADA accommodations will be available, as they are for all of our meetings. We just need a little bit of lead time on the request to make arrangements for any accommodations that we receive. City council's rules of procedure continue to be in effect, Section 21, the enforcement of decorum, and suggesting that we essentially pilot this and see how it works out, and then we come back at the end of the year or time when the council determines they want to talk about it, and see if we need to make any modifications. Other than that, the, I think, the city attorney, there weren't any additional changes into the actual rules of procedure other than adding the listening session guidelines, correct?
Mayor members, the only edits that I made to the rules of procedure was to change the March 21 footnote date to March 28.
So, council, we had this discussion. We tossed a lot of different ideas out last week and asked staff to come back with guidelines, so we had actually something to look at and consider and ultimately vote on. Discussion on this, thoughts? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just, I broke down three things here. I did have some questions. One, I just wanted to be sure that I understood that with the, for this public comment period or listening session, as we would call it now, would you still be able to come and talk about items that are on the agenda that night, or no? I just wasn't clear about that when I was reading through here.
And actually, councilmember, there's a specific guideline here. It says, "Session is intended for topics not on the city council agenda that same day."
I must have somehow missed that. I don't know how I missed that, but I did.
Probably because the city manager skipped over it when going through the bulleted list, so...
And I was looking at the bulleted list myself, too, and I didn't hear you say it either, so I'm like, "It must not be on there, Riz," but I just assumed it was covered through the other piece.
Well, Mayor, if I may, there's a reason for that. I'm sorry to interrupt, Councilmember Lohman. There's a legal reason for that, and that is that we want the discussion related to the topics that the council's going to be voting on to happen during the meeting, the council meeting where that action is being taken. Otherwise, the record is disjunctive and isn't as a part of this meeting. So that's the specific reason for it. You know, if you want to strike some sort of middle ground, we can certainly talk about that, but there is a legal reason for that.
Yeah, no, I, I'm on the end of not having that problem. So I'd rather we just keep with what we've been doing on that. So then, kind of secondarily, you know, on here, it talks about audio as opposed to video, and I know there was a substantial amount of folks that really wanted us to move our study sessions from being, you know, up in the Hague Room, you know, out here so that folks could, you know, observe what the council is doing, and, you know, the idea was around, you know, transparency. And so, you know, not that I'm opposed to this, but I do think we have to, you know, since, you know, for so many years that this has been a video form, I think there needs to be an answer to that, you know, in terms of why audio as opposed to video with that. So I'd like to, you know, hear staff's, you know, statements around that, and, you know, I think that's a concern that folks have with going to this, this format.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, or Councilmember Lohman, I don't know. I was getting telepathy from Councilmember Nelson. He was curious in the same questions. He, I think the answer is this, it depends on the purpose of the meeting. So when the council made the decision to bring, you mentioned the studies, the study meetings that we were doing in the Hague meeting that were not televised, when that decision was made to bring them into this forum, it's because a lot of the discussion there was front-end policy discussion, and often there was not clarity for residents about how council was coming to its decisions by the time it got here for actual action, right? And so, in an effort to make sure that the whole policy process discussion was viewable to the community, was the reason we made that change. As I understand it, the purpose for the city council listening sessions is not about policy or service delivery, it's about giving residents an opportunity to have a conversation with council members, right? And so there isn't this idea about how policy conversations are evolving before they get to actual action. It's more about giving the council and residents an opportunity to have authentic engagement. And, you know, it's certainly up to the council to say that you want to do it differently, but the whole point was to create a more informal and conversational and less intimidating environment, and that's why we have devised the recommendations as we, the way we have, and also based on the conversation that we had last Monday night.
I appreciate that. I, you know, I wasn't a big supporter of moving the study meetings here, so, but I do think that once you have kind of, you know, had it in a public forum, we just need to have that conversation and that we're really clear about why we're doing that. I do think that there are some public policy reasons why you may want to, but there are other things that I don't think would fall into that. I don't know how you do both things, you know, something you can't, well, you could have a video for part of it and not for, so I won't get into that, but I do think that if there is something that starts from a policy discussion, so for example, we had a group that came before us regarding, you know, domestic violence, and that's, you know, that, we made, we took an action on that. And so I think that the broader public would like to see that process, you know, how did that get to be? How did we pick this institution and that type of thing? And so those are, those are some of the things that I, in my head, are trying to kind of figure that out. How does that work? How does that, how does that, you know, how do we do that? Certainly you could cover that through, by reporting out, but, so that's kind of a piece that I'm trying to work through in my head in terms of how this makes sense. And then finally, the piece that I would wonder, would it make some sense, is that if we do bring this back for resolution, that that be a public comment before, before the public, so that they could also comment on it as well, so we can also hear that? I just wonder if this body and if staff thinks that makes some sense. So I think that that would, I think, help to firm up that this is the right process kind of moving forward, and that public can, you know, can comment on that in a real public forum. So those are just three of the ideas. I've got a couple other items, I get a lot of other folks get a crack at it, but those are just what I'm, what's going on in my head as I'm looking at this.
Thank you. Others? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. So just sort of first, in terms of logistics, I'm not wild about Hague as the location for this. It's, I mean, it's a larger room, and I don't know if we have any rooms of comparable size that are close, but it's about as far away from the council chambers as you can get in this building. And I, that just feels really inconvenient to me for folks who come to, come to this listening session with the intent of also attending the council meeting. I just wonder if there is a space, I'm assuming the theater is probably not predictably available on Monday evenings, but if there, if there is a space a little bit closer to the chambers that, that could work, that would be my preference. And if that, if there is not such a space, that, I get that, but that, to me, would be worth exploring. The other piece that I would like to suggest, and I will, of course, you know, submit to the will of the body in this one, I would like to suggest a 5:30 start time for a couple of reasons. First of all, I'm generally of the opinion that if we decide, it, to me, it's easier to amend it so that there is less time rather than amend it so that there is more time. And so I'm, starting this out, I'm kind of in favor of allowing folks more time, and if we, if it turns out a half hour works, we can always go to that. The other piece is, is just sort of as a former campaign organizer, it's easier to get folks to come to things that are on, that are set at the half-hour mark rather than a 15-minute mark. So, you know, 5 o'clock, 5:30, whatever, that's an easier time for folks to remember, and I think just those kind of little, little things will just make it a little more accessible for folks. And I also, like I said, I think, you know, maybe we don't need the full 45 minutes, but I think, it felt to me anyway, there was almost universal agreement that a half hour was not quite enough time. So that, those are just my thoughts.
Other thoughts? Comments? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Forgive me, I want to make sure I'm clear, that we're supposed to be reacting to the information and giving you feedback, correct? I don't, this isn't necessarily in a format that we would vote on tonight or anything because it's not, it's bulleted, right?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, the idea is that you would vote tonight to move forward. The guidelines can change however the council wants them to.
Okay.
So it's not formalized by resolution or anything like that.
Yep, okay, right. Okay, so I'll make a couple specific comments, and then I, if we have time, I'll have more general commentary in a little bit, but, okay, so a couple things. I'm personally, I would personally, I said this before, I like the idea of transcript. I know that's expensive, and we want to be careful not to do that. Audio is fine, we do have to be, you know, I don't know where we're at with things like our ADA requirements around audio after the fact. So I know, I guess somebody can, can request to, so for a deaf or hard-of-hearing person, they can request, what is it, TTL, is that correct? A couple of days in advance for the purposes of calling in, I assume that's how he would expect to be done. Doesn't seem the most accommodating, if you're asking me, but I, maybe that's our option. And so I would want us to think about, you know, that. I personally don't love the idea of the audio not being available easily, because I think transparency is just what we're trying to get to here. The reason we're taking this off-camera is not because we want people to not hear what's being said, we're taking it off-camera because we know that that's a barrier to people's participation, and we know that it's more comfortable if people are able to speak to us in a, in a setting that's more comfortable, just generally comfortable in general, more casual, if you will. So if we can, if we can do something about that, I would be happy, happier, to be honest with you. And then, you know, you know, I'll, I have some thoughts, but I'll leave them in case other people have specific on the topics here. Thanks.
Other thoughts, council?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a clarifying question. On the bullet point, process must be content neutral. Can you explain what that means?
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, that's me trying to condense a whole lot of First Amendment law into one sentence. So basically, the First Amendment requires that you cannot exercise content discrimination. So you couldn't say, you know, "I want to give the people that agree with me more time than the people that don't agree with me," basically. Viewpoint discrimination, content discrimination. Similarly, the First Amendment requires that the regulations that the government puts in place to regulate speech must be, and we, the term is time, place, and manner. So that's why we do things like five minutes, sign up, there are these sort of neutral requirements. And you'll see it also in our rules of procedure that talk about neutrality, and the case law backs that up as well. So we, Jamie and I, are discussing how to manage the time per speaker, not knowing how many people would want to come, not knowing if there would be, you know, 10 people on one topic and, you know, maybe those 10 people all wanted to talk at the same time, and maybe that was better for them than saying, "You get two minutes, you get two minutes," you know, that kind of an approach. We were trying to provide some flexibility, yet stay on the right side of the First Amendment. So that was Jamie and I's compromise, is to come up with the statement that it needed to be content neutral. I know I've talked to you all a lot about the First Amendment, and I think you have a, I think you all have a general understanding of what I mean by that, and so this was my effort to kind of put that out there and, you know, guide you towards that.
Thank you for clarifying that. So this is very logistical, but as we think about the room, have you put any thought into what the layout would look like? And I'm kind of thinking back to listen, or, I'm sorry, the study sessions, right? And it was just like a small little square of council members, and then everybody else was seated at tables. Have you thought about what that room layout would look like?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I have not actually thought about that. One of the comments made earlier by Councilmember Coulter about the, you know, the room location itself, part of the consideration here is just the size of our rooms that we would be able to accommodate, and the, you know, the Dakota room here is undersized, right? By the time that the whole council and a few staff get in there, we've only got a couple seats left. Same is true for McLeod. I think the best option that isn't as far removed as the Hague is the Chadwick, which we could set up in a little bit more of a approachable manner than we have it set currently with the tables. But we can certainly... But, um, we can certainly, uh, give some thought to that. And actually, I would probably want to consult with our coed team because, um, setting for conversation is an intentional design, right? And so I appreciate the question.
Thank you. And you definitely were getting to my point even in asking the question. Obviously, the study session layout is not very welcoming.
Yeah. Mayor members, we also reached out to IT about the tech setup because we in, that we hear that, you know, back when we were in person, we, we would meet in the Chadwick a lot. And when the HVAC comes on, it gets hard to hear in there. And, and Jamie and I talked about, you know, with COVID separating and, um, also with the sound quality and the tech setup, that's why we went with the Hague. Uh, it just has more options for, for spacing as well as for tech. Um, we, and there have been, uh, just so you all know, in case you didn't, there have been tech improvements in the Hague, um, since our study sessions back in, back in the day. So, um, there, it is, it does provide a little bit more in the way of options.
And then can you remind me, when we had, uh, study sessions there, were those recorded? And then, sorry.
Mr. Rugi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Carter, there was an audio recording of, uh, study meetings. They were not posted or, um, you know, put on the website or anything like that. Anybody, uh, could always request a, a copy of the audio recording and listen to it.
Okay. And then, um, would it be possible to put the audio recordings on our website?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, it is possible. It's not simple, is, is the, uh, easy answer. And, um, the, the other thing I should say too, is that there'll be minutes for the meeting, just as there were for study meetings as well. So.
Okay. Um, I think those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, one quick question, just about the timing. Um, I know we had one council member indicate maybe a little bit earlier at 5:30 instead of 5:45. Just in general, both of those times, um, may be difficult for many people in our community to connect with us, getting back from work and things like that. And so that, that's my only concern about the timing of when we're looking at starting this. For me, it works fine, you know, but I have a situation that I'm flexible. So I, I recognize that not everyone has that level of flexibility. And I think as we've always talked about, making this as easy as people, as easy as possible for people to come and talk with us, the better. So that, I just, I don't know if the city manager or if any of my colleagues have any thoughts on when we might want to start that.
I, I would agree with you, Councilmember Nelson. And back and forth on the time, I know that, in addition to members of the public, I think members of the council sometimes might have trouble getting here at 5:30. It's, it's a stretch of, for some folks, I think. I, I agree with the start on the top or the bottom of the hour. But then, as, as we start to balance all of this, I'm not exactly sure where we end up. To give ourselves enough time to, to start at a reasonable time and then not go until 2:00 in the morning. And , uh, make sure that we, we get our work done, that, uh, the rest of the, the council meeting work done. So, uh, my, my sense is, I, I hate to do too much in start, in changing start times for the council meeting. I don't want to do that every, you know, six months as we're trying to adjust. But whether or not we could adjust the start time of the, of the listening session, if we go forward with this, that I'd be more comfortable with if we tried to jiggle that a little bit. But if we, for example, change it to a 6:30 start time, I think we stay with the 6:30 start time for the council. I would hate to move that around and make that a moving target for folks. Just a thought. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I agree with that. People are going to be expecting us to be here doing the business of the city at 6:30. And we need to be mindful of, of that. Um, the only thing that I would add is maybe something within those, where we're making a recommendation that people sort of pre-register. If for some reason they can't come until 6:10, just let us know. You know, like, hey, I'll be there at 6:10. That's when I can get there. Okay, we'll be there.
We'll do what we can to make.
For five more minutes, I guess. Maybe not the best example, but.
I, I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying.
I just wanted, I want it to work for people.
And I agree. And I think that's the idea here is to make it work for people and, and increase engagement. We want, we want more people to, to have the opportunity and to be comfortable with the opportunity and the willingness to come forward and talk to us. So that's what we want to do. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I agree. I, you know, this, as, as a parent of young children, uh, 6 o'clock meetings, as was the case tonight, can, can occasionally be a challenge. Um, I think, you know, Mayor, to your point, my concern is that we're able to adjust the start time of the, the listening session rather than sort of fiddling around with the, the council meeting start time. The other piece of it is, and you know, I, I mentioned, um, wanting the idea of sort of allowing more time to start with and then less if, if it comes to that, is, and now I'm trying to remember where, there's one bullet, um, that refers to, yeah, if additional speakers are present in desire to address the city council at 6:15, then the presiding officer will give priority to those additional speakers at the next listening session. And, I mean, I, I, I get it. I mean, we have to have a definitive start time for the council meeting. That's a really unsatisfying bullet to me. Because if I show up on Monday, March, March 28th, I want to talk to the council on Monday, March 28th. I don't want to say, I don't want to be told, we'll come back on Monday, April 4th, right? And so that, I, I mean, that, that's the balance, to your point, Mayor, that I'm struggling with is if we do somehow have a huge turnout, as occasionally happens, that, you know, we're do, we're sort of doing the best we can to, a lot more time for that, so that folks don't, folks don't sort of get that, you know, gone in five minutes sign when they show up at the, at the door.
Councilmember Loman?
So, you know, the more I'm thinking about this, and I know that as I say this, that there will be somebody at home that will, uh, not like me saying this, so I'll try to say it quickly. Um, I, I wonder, you know, we talk about engagement and those folks being able to be involved. And I, I've, I, I wonder if it makes sense, you know, to what Councilmember Coulter is, is talking about here. You know, we have our meetings on Monday night. And if, you know, if we really are truly engaging and we are getting folks to show up, I mean, it, it should take up all that time. It should bounce up against that 6:30 timeframe. So I wonder if it makes some sense to look at a different date to do this. Or, you know, you have a, you know, a, a listening session or two on, on the Mondays that are there. And then you look to, to, uh, you know, pick a Monday that we would typically have off, um, and have a longer listening sessions for those folks who, uh, you know, that, that 5:45 to 6:15, that's such a narrow, uh, period of time. And I think of a lot of working folks, uh, trying to get off from work, you know, 5:00 to 6:00 is typically dinner hour, uh, trying to get here because they want to, you know, trying to get out of work, trying to get over here. And so I just wonder if, you know, from a public standpoint of engagement, now, and I'm not real excited about this, but, uh, does it make sense to occasionally maybe put this on a different day? So we'd have a longer period of time so folks can, can be able to comment to their, uh, to the, to the council.
A thought to consider. Absolutely. Councilmember Alessandro?
So, a couple of additional thoughts here. Um, so, um, I, I feel like we've kind of engineered ourselves into a position where we're not quite sure what we're solving for again. And I don't mean that to be disrespectful to anybody, but I want to just kind of back, back it up a little bit and say, you know, what are the problems we're trying to solve by what we're doing? Right? Um, and we can have as many listening sessions as we want to. We can have town halls every day if we wanted to. There's no limit to us as a council putting out in public that we will be assembling to take people's questions and comments. So, I mean, there's, that's our, that's the, that's our opportunity, right? And so, so absent that, what is specifically the, the problem we're trying to solve here, right? With this particular thing related to our city council meeting? Um, uh, you know, the, the two, two things in my head are on my mind. Um, one is that, um, we don't get the opportunity to interact with individuals who bring, um, requests for redress to the council. So we can't get clarifying questions answered right away. For example, um, on more than one occasion, uh, for sure, I've taken away a thought, um, that was, oh, the person was asking about X. And by the time it got back to us, it was about Y and I had just completely missed it, right? Um, and have had those interactions, by the way, via email, a number of times where I respond to a, a resident and they tell me, you know, they, this is what they're asking me about. And I say, oh, okay, let me make sure I understand. And they're like, nope, you missed it. And I go back and forth, right? So those things exist already today. The other piece of this though is, is, and this is where I think people have gotten a little hung up who have, who have reached out to us, is that the, the idea is that it's in, it's in public, right? That it's not an individual, um, you know, I mean, there's plenty of opportunity for people to, to contact their city council members. I get a lot of council interaction, but not as much as I would have thought necessarily for, for folks who are, um, uh, you know, engaged like they are. So, um, I, so the question becomes what is specific about the forum of Monday night that we want to try to preserve? That's unique about that compared to all the other ways that people can provide public comment, right? So they can comment on public posts from any of us individually. They can comment on the city government's website as well as Let's Talk Bloomington, as well as, um, our, our social media posts. They can, um, contact us via email and copy the city, the council secretary, and then it's subject to a dated request, and everybody can see it. And then they take those letters and they post them online anyway. So it works out good for everybody, that those things become public comment, right? Literally public comment. Um, so they can call, they can email, they can write, they can show up in person. Those are all the choices that they have. This is a very specific in-person thing, right? That's, that's very specific that they're guaranteed to find their council member at this location, at this time, for the purposes of addressing specific questions that are not on the agenda. And I just want to make sure we're preserving that in the process here. Um, whether it's 20 minutes, 30 minutes, 45 minutes, I mean, that's not so much the important part, right? But it is, I think the important part of it is, is that it is accessible to the public regularly and that they, um, they can learn about the results of that interaction, um, in a public forum, which is why I'm as hesitant as I am to be okay with this thing being, you know, kind of a, you have to make a request to get the audio. I'd like for us to try to make it available because I just think that that's part of public comment, right? And, and that's what we do. Um, but I also, I also, I also do want to, if you give me a moment here, I, I want to say that like, Mr. Mayor, the fact that last week, I, I'm, I'm surprised that we heard that we were in trouble for actually doing what we did last week. It seems we can't win because, because you didn't have to do what you did last week, right? It, this is a procedural issue that's council business only. We could have put it on the consent agenda and walked away, and it would have been completely within our reason to do so. Uh, I, I am frustrated by, um, the, the attitude that, um, for every inch we give, there's a mile taken in some cases. And, and, and I, you know, I'm, what I mean by that is that of course we wouldn't do that. But people have lost faith in us for whatever reason, whether that's on purpose or by accident. Um, I've lost faith in us. So when we say we will make ourselves available, they question whether we will. And when they say, when we say that we're not removing the opportunity for public comment, they say, yes, you are, because the words are changing, not because we're making ourselves inaccessible. Um, and, and when we do go through a process of amending an agenda at a moment's notice, to give people who wanted to make public comment, make public comment on public comment, um, we're in trouble for that now too. And at some point, we have to, we have to get past some of those things, right? You, Mr. Thule, I know you're still in the audience. I don't, I'm not calling you out for any other reason than I, I care about what you asked. The question that you, that he asked today was, last week, we made that choice to open up a public, um, a, a public comment period on what we were trying to draw to get people's attention. Because that was not on the agenda ahead of time, there were people that may have not been able to, to be here for that. And as a result, when they showed up tonight and then they found out this was back in organizational business and wasn't being pulled forward, it kind of got frustrating, right? And, and so I get that. I want to acknowledge that that's what you were saying, and I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Thule, thanks for letting me call you out on that particular. I, I, I don't, um, I also though, you know, what we did last week was not something we had to do either. And it was, and, and my, and I'm not speaking to you directly. I'm just saying, you know, in general, we, we have to get to a point where, you know, we're all trying our very best to make this work. And, um, and it, it can't be that for every time we try to do something like good or helpful or a little bit above and beyond, um, it's, it's still treated like, you know, we, we did, we did the worst possible thing in the world. Like, we've got to figure that out. And if the first couple of these public comment opportunities are people just yelling at us like that and we can get past this, I would be all for that, frankly, because I want to have that dialogue. So I can say, why are you so angry at me about something that's not really, in the scheme of things, that big of a deal? And I'm, I'm looking forward to that, actually, so that we can get past some of this stuff. So, thanks for hearing me out, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. I apologize for taking so much of your time.
Thank you for the input. Councilmember Alessandro. Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, just, just briefly, um, I, I very much agree. And, and just jumped to mind, I had a recent meeting with a constituent here at Civic, Civic Plaza. And, and very much appreciated the, the passion and the concerns this individual brought forward. And I realized so much of it was, boy, if I could have clarified some of these points three months ago, I could have saved a whole lot of frustration. And even if you didn't agree on where these policy or, or things were, we could have been talking on the same page. And I would have had a better, we both would have had a better idea. So I think as it stands now, yes, I think there's areas for improvement with some of these bullet points. But this is going to be an infinitely more effective tool for me to clarify, for me to learn as a policymaker. And even if we're not solving everything in a minute, uh, to be able to say, let me introduce you to this member of staff. I'm going to stay in touch and on the loop on this. And hopefully we've got folks out in the community, again, even if they aren't cheerleading what we're doing, are able to explain and say, okay, if you're going to go after this thing, go after it for these reasons or whatever. Uh, so I, I would just encourage us to move ahead with something tonight. I'm ready to give a thumbs up to these list of bullets here because I know, A, I don't want to make assumptions on what's going to happen for those first few public comments. Um, I'm sure there'll be hiccups. We'll figure it out as we go. If we need to change the times, we can, but we can do it with evidence in our hands of here's how often we ran up against a wall. Um, so yeah, I, I, I'm very much excited. I'm glad folks that have emailed me, um, as I've clarified this, have said, oh yeah, that's something I'd participate in. That was reassuring to see. So I'd like to move forward with this, knowing, let's give it a few months. Let's have a checklist and figure out what we got to fix and just iterate as we go.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Loman?
Uh, Mayor, I wasn't sure if that was a motion that you were putting forward.
I think that would, let's, let's make sure everybody's had their say and talk.
Okay. Um, I did have a couple of things that I wanted to, to mention. Um, uh, so I'll go back to the piece of, I would be interested to know what, uh, folks think of when we do bring this back, that it is held in a public comment period. So that, for me, I think is going to, uh, you know, play a big role in whether I can support what we're moving forward here tonight. So I just think that.
I'm sorry, I, I missed that. Councilmember, what were you asking about?
So what I was asking about, and maybe I wasn't clear about it before, is, you know, when we bring this back, after we've had our, our, uh, our trial period, can we have a public comment on that? Obviously I wasn't clear because you didn't catch on to what I was saying either. So I'm glad I brought that back. So, uh, uh, so that's what I'm looking for. I, I would like to hear folks, uh, feeling about that. Cause I, I really do think that we, once we get that trial period done, um, I think that'll really allows folks to kind of say, hey, you know what? We really like this. And we really want to, uh, you know, move this forward. Uh, maybe that's not a good idea, but maybe it's an idea. And the other thing I would ask for, um, uh, you know, whether it be 5:30 or 5:00 period of time, Mondays are a busy day for me. I'm at a, and I'm in a leadership role at, at the place where I work at. Um, I would hope that this body could have some leniency, um, in terms of, because I, I'm not going to be able to make that 5:45 or 5:30 or 5:00 or if we do a 4:00 period of time. And I just hope that this body would be willing to, uh, if there are residents that want to address this council member, um, about the first district, that we, we want to move those, uh, topics, uh, further down, uh, so that I can be able to address that. Um, that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm kind of putting forward the idea of maybe another night makes sense. Cause I just think of folks who've got children and they're trying to get here. How do you do that if you grew up in a single parent family? I mean, this five, you know, this 5:45 time, my mom was a single parent. I don't think she'd ever be able to make a public comment. So if she had something she really wanted to address, I don't know how you'd do it. Um, and so I, I totally agree with you, uh, Councilmember Alessandro. What are we trying to do? You know, and I think that we're trying to be accessible to as many people as possible. And I did this to Patrick, and he probably hates me when he's on the knock. But, uh, we added another meeting, you know, we added an evening meeting. And I've gone sometimes to that, not as much as I, I should, uh, given that you were doing that. But what it did is it did provide the ability, uh, for the noise oversight commission, commission for, um, uh, for, for noise from airplanes, to have different folks be able to come and address that body. And, uh, I don't, I know you've been there, so I don't know if that's been successful at all or, um, uh, but, uh, I just wonder if this body breaks out of its, its, uh, and maybe we don't do it now, but maybe we look to do something, uh, to that effect, uh, with one of our days of the month, uh, to make it possible that we come in either on Saturday or Sunday, just a different timeframe, uh, maybe provide some childcare, uh, so that folks can address this body, um, who don't have that. provide some childcare so that folks can address this body who don't have that, you know, traditional piece. I just think, I just love that statement that you made about, what are we trying to address here? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just to, and I think, based on the reactions, and I might be speaking for others, Councilmember Loman, I think, I think some of us thought you were proposing that we bring this resolution back for a third time.
No.
And I, I thought, no, we, I don't think we need to do that. So that, I think that was my worry. I will, I will say, you know, I, you know, to Councilmember Martin's point, I, you know, I think we could all sort of tweak the bullet points in different ways. None of the suggestions that I brought forward, I feel like, are deal breakers for me. I just, I'm, you know, I was thinking in terms of, how would I, how would I set this up if it were just me? Obviously, it is not just me. You know, I think, as I said, it would probably be easier to shorten the time later on rather than lengthen it. But, you know, we did so tonight, and I think in the past, it's only been a handful of number of times where we've actually had to extend public comment beyond the 20 minutes that we have it currently. So I think it is probably fair to say that, for the most part, a half hour would be enough time. I am a little bit concerned about what happens if more people show up than we expect, but we'll just have to, I think we will have to cross that bridge when we come to it. I do, you know, it's getting into the weeds as far as logistics. I really do want to encourage finding another venue besides Hague. I get the reasons for it, but I, you know, this building is not the most intuitive to navigate as it is, and asking folks to literally walk, well, not literally, but almost literally walk as far as possible to get to the council chambers is not something I'm thrilled about. You know, beyond, beyond that, I think, to Councilmember Martin's point, I think we even had sort of a display of it here tonight. That is precisely the clarity, the interaction, the back and forth, the kind of conversation that I think we really could have in a much more, even more productive way than we did tonight, in terms of clarifying some of those questions that, well, gee, if I had known about this beforehand, I wouldn't have gotten so angry. And I'm just going to say it, this day and age, I think we could all use a sort of reduction in our base level of stress. And I think having that kind of productive conversation is a way that we can do that. So I am, I'm ready to move forward with these bullet points, understanding that it is, it is a work in progress, that we can certainly tweak things. But I think this is a good framework to move forward and kind of figure out what's going to work best for this council, and understanding, of course, that this council, as it exists now, will not exist forever. There will be future councils who may find other avenues work better for whatever reason, and they can tweak it as they see fit as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. The main point that I will agree with is that Hague is not the place. I agree. In addition to being halfway across the world, it's dank. I like, dank. At least Chadwick has windows, and it opens to windows, and it's a, it's a much more welcoming place than Hague. So even the name Hague, I don't know. So I would agree with all of the conversation, and everybody's made excellent points, I agree. And Councilmember Loman, just like people who are participating, you can certainly call in. If you're tearing down the freeway, using a hands-free device, of course, you could call in and participate in the meeting in that way. We would certainly, if, you know, if there's somebody who has an issue specific to your district or a topic, you know, a sustainability topic, for example, we could certainly adjust the agenda as such to make sure that you're there for that. So, but you also have the call-in opportunity to participate as well. And I think, to Councilmember DeLaSandro's point, it's never been easier to, in one way or another, reach out to and touch your council member, whether it's written, or email, or phone call, or in person here, or goodness knows, in the line at Cub, or when, I mean, out and about. I mean, there's all kinds of opportunities to do that now. And agree with, the goal of what we're trying to accomplish here is to get more, more active engagement and involvement in what we're doing here. And, I mean, as I, the numbers that I recited last week, we had more than 180 interactions over two years, and eight people accounted for about 50% of those interactions. We can do better than that. We've got to do better than that. This is a city of 90,000 people, and I want, I want more people comfortable enough to come to the Chadwick Conference Room, where we're sitting in a, where we're sitting in a square. It's not us sitting in a line, talking to someone, but to have people sit among us, to be able to talk and to have a conversation, I think that's, that's the goal that I hope to accomplish on this. That's what I want to do. And I think we have the opportunity here to, to change this, to lower the temperature just a bit, to, to make it more of a conversation. And yes, I mean, I think it was a good example of how this could work. Even, even last week was as well, when it, when it became a conversation and we took ideas back and forth. I thought we accomplished a lot. So I think we've got possibilities here. Councilmember DeLaSandro?
Just one logistical comment. I do think if we are going to, you know, when we think about people in the room, people on the phone, as we all know from our pandemic times, there's a, there's a decorum required to make sure that people on the phone are able to hear. And when you have crosstalk and you have other things like that, you can really lose the essence of the conversation. So if we are going to do a kind of a hybrid, you know, some people in person, some people on the phone kind of, of meeting style, you know, we're just going to make, we need to make sure that there are rules of engagement that are really easy for people and all, and whether that's prioritizing the folks on the phone, or making sure we pause, you know, each time to ask for clarification or comment on the phone, lest we find a bunch of people just on mute, listening, and no engagement on the phone. To Councilmember Loman's point, people who may not be able to get here but want to participate, we want to make sure we feel good about that.
Agree, and if that's, I mean, that's the evolving Zoom or phone meeting over the past two years, that people understand that and learning that, but we're still learning that, and best ways to do that.
Right. Hopefully, we'll be better at it than we would have been if we did this two years ago, for sure.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir.
Exactly. I, I know we've talked about a number of different things. Unless folks think this is an absolute, there's an absolute deal breaker in this, I'd like to, you know, try and move this toward what we have. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a deal breaker, but I do have one item. I would request that we look at, starting this on April 25th. April 11th is a ceremony to welcome chief honges here before the meeting. So that would be the only thing that I would recommend that we change.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, thank you for that. Councilmember Nelson, I had a chance to talk right before the meeting. And we only have two meetings in April. It's a relatively rare occurrence for us to only have two meetings in a month. So there isn't a meeting April 4th, and there isn't a meeting on April 18th. And as Councilmember Nelson indicated, our new police chief will have his formal swearing in here at the council meeting on the 11th, and there's a reception from 5:30 until 6:30 that evening prior to the meeting. So if we were to start on the 11th, and we started at 5:45, the council would have very little time to spend in the reception. And I think, I'm anticipating that you probably want to spend more time there. So I think if the council is okay with that, the first listening session would be held on the 25th, and you would just need to amend the resolution that's in your packet here when you adopt it.
Would I have regular public comment on April 11th?
Yeah. Because we're going to reprogram that agenda before then, so. Does it? Okay. Okay. And then we'll have regular public comment on April 11th. So we'd have one more, one more agenda like this one.
Councilmember Loman?
So as long as we're adding stuff, then, I'd like to put a bullet on there that this comes back once we have made the evaluation to public comment. I haven't heard anybody disagree with that or have problems with that. I'd love to hear that if you have a problem with that, but I'd love to have us come back and have public comment on, you know, we've made this change. What do you think?
So you're not saying, you're not saying the reevaluation in December, but rather, we approve this tonight and then set at the April 11th meeting an opportunity?
Oh, no, no, not that. No, absolutely not. What I'm saying is, is that when we're done with this trial run in December, yeah, let's have it, come back and let's have an evaluation from the public, and the public says, hey, you know, I love this idea, or here's what I would tweak with. I think that having that dialogue in public, under the cameras, I think validates the process. So.
I think the final bullet point there, reevaluate in December '22 or earlier, if requested by council. And I guess personally, my understanding was, yeah, that would probably include public involvement in some way, but yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, if it could be added meeting with a public comment, that's what I'd like to see. If somebody's opposed it, I just want to hear why, but yeah.
I would be happy to, you know, add that addendum on there, that it does include public information or public comment. Councilmember Nelson, did I see a hand up?
Yeah, Mayor, just very quickly, to Councilmember Loman's point earlier about adding other days, one of the things we've talked about are town hall meetings, and that's what I heard you saying, is let's do those on a regular basis. I know that's in the works, that we're looking at how to bring those back, so, but I think those will be that other opportunity, lengthier opportunity.
So sidebar, Mr. Verbrugge, the status of town hall meetings?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the Community Outreach and Engagement Division have town hall forums on their work plan for this year, and we're putting together a schedule, we're anticipating May or June, probably June is when we would kick those off.
Councilmember Martin?
Happy to make a quick motion on this. Oh, working out.
Standby.
Not quite quick.
Ms. Manderscheid?
So Mayor members, what Jamie and I are trying to figure out here is that there is quite a bit of a lead time for public hearings. And so we advertised public hearings on April 11th that will show up in the paper on Thursday, this Thursday, that say council meeting, meeting starting on or after 6:30, I believe. And I'm trying to confirm that. So we have a little bit of a, we could start, what time is that reception, Jamie?
It's at 5:30 to 6:30.
Oh, well, then that works.
That shouldn't be an issue.
That's right.
Yes.
So we'll just change the start time?
For the council meeting, for the regular meeting.
For the council meeting on April 11th.
Yep.
To 6:30.
Actually, I would recommend, Mr. Mayor and council, that we actually, this evening, have an action to change the start time of the meeting, because I think we probably need a formal action to do that, do we not?
Technically, it's a regular meeting, so we want to make sure that that meeting on April 11th stays a regular meeting and doesn't transform into a special meeting. So, let's see.
Tell you what, while you guys work this out, what I would like to do...
It's the open meeting law.
What I would like to do, just to make sure that it's on the record and it's absolutely clear, is to make sure that we read each of these bullet points. And I think Jamie did when we started, but I want to make sure that we do that. And so I'm going to nominate Councilmember Martin to read each of these bullet points for me. And just as they are written, and so they're officially in the record and for all to hear, that this is what we're talking about, these are the guidelines that we have laid out for council listening sessions.
Mayor, to clarify, should I include the proposed additions in this bullet point reading of April 25th and public comment?
Yes, if you would, please. Yes. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. First bullet, they'll be from 5:45 to 6:15, with a council meeting starting at 6:30 in the Hague Conference Room.
No, I'm sorry, we've changed that to the Chadwick.
In the Chadwick Conference Room.
That was the other change.
Occurs when there is a regular scheduled council meeting that same Monday. Take a look at council's approved calendar. Regular meetings under open meeting law. Each listening session will be posted on the city's calendar and website. There'll be a report out at the 6:30 council meeting occurring on the same day. Audio recorded, no video recording or live broadcast. Call-in option will be available. Information will be published on the agenda packet, subject to open meeting law. Roll call is required to establish a quorum. A quorum is needed to open the meeting and take action, except, except less than a quorum can vote to adjourn. Pre-registration with topic is encouraged. Those that have pre-registered will be called on to speak before those who have not pre-registered. Session is intended for topics not on the council agenda that same day. There'll be up to 10 minutes per speaker and topic. Mayor may request information from those present at 5:45 to organize the discussion and adjust time allocated per speaker, so long as an equal amount of time is allocated for each pre-registered speaker, and any such remaining time is set aside for those speakers that did not pre-register. Process must be content neutral. If everyone that has pre-registered or otherwise desires to speak has spoken, but it's not yet 6:15, then the council can adjourn early. If additional speakers are present and desire to address the city council at 6:15, then the presiding officer will give priority to those additional speakers at the next listening session. Minutes will be taken, with actions and attendance recorded. The mayor or its designee is the presiding officer. The city manager and city attorney or their designees shall also attend. A sergeant-at-arms will be present. City manager may request additional staff attend based on topics indicated at pre-registration. ADA accommodation available upon request, at least two business days' notice requested. Section 21 of the city council's Rules of Procedure, enforcement of decorum, are applicable to these listening sessions as if they occurred in the council chambers. The city council's Rules of Procedure and Robert's Rules of Order, most current edition, shall be consulted for parliamentary procedures, and when needed, there'll be a reevaluation, including a public comment opportunity in December of 2022 or earlier, if requested by the city council. And the first listening session will be held April 25th of 2022.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Martin, for reading that. I could listen to you read bedtime stories or anything else. That was lovely. If, I think that we have found the easiest solution here is to proceed with the resolution as it's presented, so that the changes would be effective on April 11th, and then we'll have a subsequent action to just cancel the listening session on April 11th, which is consistent with what you just read, that the first one would be on April 25th.
So thank you, councilmember. Appreciate it. Council, with that, and those bullet points laid out in front of us, I'd look for a motion to adopt a resolution amending the council rules of procedure. So move.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Loman, to adopt a resolution amending the council rules of procedure. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, Councilmember Loman?
Sorry to stop this short here. I just want to be clear, on the ADA accommodations, it's got it two business days, and I just wanted to be sure that I understood that, because typically, my understanding is the agenda comes out Thursday night, so the business day is Friday and Monday, so you'd have to put it in on Friday. Is that two business days, or it's Thursday?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I would say that if the accommodation would probably need Thursday, because if it, if we were to say Friday is okay, it could be anytime up till 4:30 Friday. It may be tough for us to contact somebody who could act as a translator or provide some other service with only one, with only Monday to try and locate that person. So the two business days is, I would think it would need to be done by Thursday.
So as much as we possibly can, just making sure we have. I know we've got the pre-agenda stuff out there with the bullet points, but not the specifics, so that those folks who have a, you know, have a disability that can't get to that stuff, it's just so tough to try to turn it on Thursday, because you don't know what the, what the content of it would be till that next day. So I just would hate to see that, because of a procedural issue, you're not able to take advantage of that, that accommodation.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, you know, the, the advantage of the listening session is that the need for accommodation is driven by the person who is choosing to come in. And so there isn't a published agenda or discussion items that are going to be part of it. So, you know, that person would presumably be reaching out in advance.
And Mayor, it's not a requirement to do two days in advance, it's just requested.
Very good.
So there's no, it's, it's just, helps us have more time to track down the, to meet the accommodation. It's the same in the rules as well.
Very good. We have a motion and a second on the table to adopt a resolution amending the council rules of procedure. Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing no further council discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven, nothing. And council, I would look for a motion to approve the listening session guidelines as read by Councilmember Martin in his dulcet tones with the, with the changes as specified per our discussion. So move.
Say.
Say.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Lohman to adopt our, to approve the listening session guidelines. Hearing no further council discussion on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, if I could request a motion to cancel the April 11th listening session due to the extraordinary circumstance of the new police chief's reception.
I will make that motion, and we cancel the April 11th listening session due to the extraordinary circumstances of the chief swearing in.
Second?
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Coulter. Question by Councilmember Lohman.
So just so, just for absolute clarity, so we just established the meeting starts at 6:30. So my understanding then is on the 11th, the council meeting starts at 11, even though we've canceled the listening session?
Yes, council meeting starts at 6:30 on April 11th.
Okay, I just want to be clear that that's what we just did.
Which allows us time for the 5:30 to 6:30 reception with the new police chief.
Sounds good.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Just one follow-up, Mr. Mayor. Does that mean that the agenda for the 11th meeting will look like the ones that exist today, i.e., there will be a formerly known as public comment period? Or there will be no comment period?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, there will be no public comment on the revised agenda when we go to the April 11th format.
Okay, so we won't have the listening session, but we, but we've changed the format, so we will no longer have the existing.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And again, to accommodate the chief swearing in reception. Any additional questions? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we expect other things like that to come up that would cause us to cancel these listening sessions?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, there are only a couple times during the year where we have a pre-meeting reception that is pre-COVID, something that's standard for things that we do. One that occurs to me is prior to the recognition of the Omar Bondroude Award, is there's typically a pre-meeting reception then. The other that occasionally happens is at the end of a council member's term prior to a last meeting, we often have a reception for outgoing council members. Those are the only two that occur to me. Other than that, we do our very best to schedule around council meetings.
Okay, and those could, in theory, start a little earlier.
Those absolutely correct.
And we don't have to cancel the listening sessions in the future.
That's correct. I would envision, like, for example, the Bondroude session started, or the reception beginning at 5:00 or 5:15 to give the council at least, at least a half hour to spend time with the Bondroude award winner.
Perfect, thank you for that.
Any additional questions? We have the motion and the second on the table to cancel the listening session on the 11th due to the extraordinary circumstances around the chief's swearing in reception. Hearing no further council discussion on this matter, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven, zero. Thank you for that. Thanks for that discussion, and I'm looking forward to seeing how this this works. I'm optimistic. I do think it's, it's going to be an improvement, it's going to lead to greater engagement, it's going to give us a better opportunity for a back and forth and a better understanding of our, some of the issues that we're all facing as a community, so. And we will have this discussion again in December to see how it's all working, so thanks for it. Item 8.3 on our agenda is the amendment of our 2022 legislative policies. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The purpose of this item on the agenda is just to get some, a slight tweak to the council's adopted legislative priorities for this year. And the specific ask here is that the legislative platform piece relative to the Bloomington sales tax or the local option sales tax, that we would prioritize the projects that we have submitted. The reason for doing this is often the legislative process requires some negotiation or some rapid response to actions by the legislature, and that may happen before we're able to come back and get the consent of council as an entire body on some of these things. And so the the ask here is that we prioritize these projects so that if there is something that happens at the legislature that, you know, requires us to make a decision about which or if some of these projects are or are not included, that we have at least an idea of what the the council's, the council's mindset is on each of these. And so for the purpose, so folks are aware of what we're talking about, we have submitted four projects for consideration for the sales tax, Bloomington Ice Garden, the Community Health and Wellness Center, the Center for the Arts Expansion, and the Dwan Golf Course Improvements, and the amendment would be to prioritize them in that order. And again, good point that was made earlier in our meeting is that even if the legislature does grant this authority, we still have a referendum that would be required by residents. So I think it's always good that we say that every time we're talking about the sales tax proposal. So happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council, any questions on this? Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, I just wanted to have the manager kind of talk a little bit about the priorities a little bit, you know. Somebody sees this priority list, you know, if it were me, I would, you know, put the the Health and Wellness Center, you know, first, and other folks might put the Arts Center forward. And I noticed that the golf course is last, and so I'm just, if you could talk a little bit more, you know, how did staff get to these four priorities?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman. The golf course was listed as the fourth priority for a couple of reasons. One, it is our understanding that there have been very few approvals of local sales tax for golf course, if there have been any. I know that there is one other community that has a golf course as part of their present, or part of their request this year. It's an outstate community, and I think that there are strong feelings among legislators about whether that is a, an eligible or a wise use of the the authority for that purpose. You know, one of the things that we've shared in the past is that the chair of the House Tax Committee says that, you know, part of the requirement in state statute is that it actually has to be a facility, and so in his mind, it has to be taller than the tax chair, right? And, you know, it's not like he's a, you know, he's not a starting center for the Lakers, right? So, you know, it's, that's your threshold. But with the golf course, for our proposal, we're talking about the clubhouse reconstruction. So it is a facility, and it would also include improvements to the golf course, right? And so I think that's where we get into somewhat of a gray area from the legislator mindset about whether that's consistent with the intent. And then if you look at the top two priorities, it's a good idea to clarify our order here of the Ice Garden first and the Health and Wellness Center second. If you'll recall, when we approved the resolution last year for bonding, for state bonding request, we had the public health replacement as the number one priority, and we had the Ice Garden as the number two priority. The reason was that the the public health building is more of a core function of government for the services that we deliver, and also because it was in the context of an ongoing pandemic that we were responding to, and it's also a much more aged facility. Okay, so those were the three criteria that we said that was going to be number one when we submitted. And by the way, the governor's recommendations for bonding included public health and did not include the Ice Garden. When we submitted the sales tax, we put the Ice Garden as the number one priority for the primary reason that it is the closest to being shovel-ready of all of these projects, and we have an urgency in terms of the replacement of the mechanical and the refrigeration in that the R22 refrigerant is, has has been prohibited for importation or manufacture in the United States. And so there is an increasingly dwindling supply of R22, and as that continues to dwindle, the price is going to go up exponentially. And so we have an urgency to replace our refrigeration system. And so the combination of the of the urgency around the refrigeration and the closest to being shovel-ready is why that was the number one priority for the sales tax.
If I could, I want to thank you, manager, for clarifying that. I think, you know, just another example of how our staff is making sure we're on the ball in terms of being financially responsible as we put the priorities forward. And so just one thing occurred to me as I was listening to that list, there were other items that were on our, on our legislative agenda now that we've found that maybe the golf course doesn't make sense. And I want to ask the question because I think the public might, might be asking this question in the back of their mind. Probably doesn't make sense at this point to take out, you know, item number four and put in another one. And I just wanted you to comment on that as to why that might not be such a good idea, you know, at this late stage of the game.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, the process that was laid out by the legislature was that resolutions from the cities requesting the authority had to be submitted by the end of December, and it had to detail the projects that the authority would have applied to. We have already had a hearing in committee in the House. We have not had a hearing in committee in the Senate as yet. And so I think it would be procedurally complicated to go back and try to swap out one project for another. Even if there were time within the legislative process, I don't know that there's time within the policy process here at council to determine what that might be and then go back and work within the timeframe of the legislature.
I appreciate that. I just want to be real clear because I, I'm just imagining an email coming in, and that would be their question, so thank you for clarifying that.
Understood. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to clarify with where we are in the legislative session, even if there were the the desire for the council to do that, I would be shocked if there would be any consideration of any kind of legislative hearing on a revised proposal at this stage in the game. So I just really wanted to comment that I support both the the concept of prioritization and the the specific priorities as they're laid out. I think, you know, to the points that the city manager made, you know, I think the Ice Garden has long, I have long believed that there should be other funding, and I think this is, this is absolutely the way to go for that. And the, I mean, the refrigerant thing, that's, I mean, that's, that's a real existential issue for the Ice Garden that needs to happen soon. So I just wanted to make that comment. And then speaking of things that that generate strong feelings from legislators, I feel like I should point out that I, the preferred term is Greater Minnesota rather than outstate.
Now the city manager got us in trouble.
Well, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, I, I try to play, I try to use neutral language, right? And so that seems to confer some favoritism on a part of Minnesota, so.
Additional questions or comments on this? Hearing none? Council, I'd look for a motion to adopt the 2022 legislative policies as amended.
Wouldn't want to do that if there isn't anybody else jumping at the.
Councilmember Lohman?
All right. Mayor, I'll move to adopt the 2022 legislative policies as amended.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter to amend our 2022 legislative policies. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven, zero. Item 8.4, our city council policy and issues update. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Earlier this evening, under public comment, there was a question about why is the city using radio to advertise for job employments? And so I'm, I'm not using this format to provide response to public comment, but I think it's a very timely question. The fact is that we have not in the past typically utilized paid media or, I should say, you know, radio or television to advertise for job openings. But the city of Bloomington, like many, many cities, is frankly in a crunch for staffing, especially for our summer programs. And so the purpose of raising this issue now is not to answer that comment earlier, it's simply to make a pitch for anybody who's watching that if you know of somebody who is looking for employment this summer in our seasonal positions, whether it's in our parks and recreation or other areas, that we would love for you to refer them. We actually have some referral bonuses that we may be paying as well, so if if anybody is looking to pick up some extra work and would love some really fun jobs, like our our seasonal jobs, I think tend to be on the funner side, funner, is that the right word? More fun side, thank you. Oh, my grammar teacher would kill me for that. Yeah, to please check out our our job postings online. If you go onto the website and you can look for, apply, the information is there for our current openings.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council, anything to bring forward? Councilmember Lohman?
Just a couple of things. I'm not sure if the fire department's still looking for full-time people, but if they are, that's another, you could put, you could add them in there, into that list of folks there.
I think they're always looking for interested members to join the fire department.
Whether it be full-time or volunteer, or paid on call, shall I say. Ooh. See, Fire Chief Seal coming through the, through the wall, like the Kool-Aid guy. Just a couple of other things. One item that I brought up earlier is around just this, just massive confusion after those articles that were kind of written there around the water park and who's paying for it. I think some of that confusion may be because we were looking at that nonprofit model at one point in time, which ironically, I think in some ways would have given us more money, but that's another whole commentary for another day. And then also around, you know, these four items we just added on to our legislative agenda as well. And I don't know, I just think we need to to get after this a little bit more, and I mean, I feel like we already have. I mean, we've, you know, we've had it in various publications, but maybe there's different ways in which that we can, you know, maybe it's a town hall, maybe it's, you know, you know, you know, a more conversation, bringing some more stuff back to this this council meeting, but I just, I'm very concerned that our, that are, that there is a, seems to be a large group of folks that just don't understand what the impact is to the taxpayer, and I just get very concerned about that, that you get worked up and then you see it on Facebook or you see it on some other kind of thing, and then I've got one other item. But I don't know, Mayor, if you've got any comments on that or?
Couldn't agree more, councilmember. I think the more information we can get out there, the better, and I think on a variety of topics. And I know, for example, our, we're going to have an update on Expo, I think our.
April 13th.
April 13th. 13th, very good. So that will be an important update. But but I agree, and I think one of the reasons, one of the ideas behind what we did with the the op-ed piece, the commentary piece, was also to break it down into talking points so you have them available, and I know we all get those questions and hear those questions. And I think whether it's the seven of us here or anybody on city staff, to to answer any and all questions as, as accurately and as aggressively, frankly, as possible, because I know there are questions and people are just not, they're not clear on it, and there's there's misunderstanding as to what we're talking about and how we're, I mean, the back and forth we had this evening, I think proves that point very clearly. And it didn't help the the initial commentary piece was fairly one-sided and misleading in a lot of different ways and disingenuous in a lot of other ways. And so whatever we can do to correct that and to to have people understand and fully grasp what we're talking about and the impacts of what we're talking about here as well, not just the project itself, but the long-term impacts that it's going to have on Bloomington, I think is just essential. And so I know we've talked about this before, Mr. Verbrugge, I think it's an ongoing challenge, and I think I would, I would challenge our, our already outstanding communications staff to come up with more options and opportunities and ideas about how we get the word out there.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, appreciate the question. In fact, had a discussion, was, that was this morning, with our Port Authority Administrator, you know, as as these issues, because they're complicated or coming forward, that we are timing communication and information to coincide with the policy discussions. So there's at least resource there that's more digestible than trying to just understand the actions of the council or the actions of the port. I think it is likely that we will have additional information as part of the town hall forums, right? We're trying to figure out the structure of those because I know the the council would like those to, again, be an opportunity for two-way communication rather than just one-way communication, so we need to figure out the best way to do that. But there is going to be an opportunity there to provide some more direct explanation in a, I think, an easier to understand format. One of the challenges, and the council understands this, and I think it's always good to remind people, is that we operate in, in a knowledge gap, right? Because the the council sees so much information and has the opportunity to discuss these things multiple times in order to get to a place of understanding and knowledge enough to make a good informed decision. And and the community is often not moving along at the same pace or with the same level of information as the council. And so there is a gap in terms of where the council is at and where the community is at. We have made, I think, extraordinary efforts over the last couple of years as a city to try and improve the amount of information and the manner that it's communicated. The council, four years ago, I think, made the decision to take the Bloomington briefing to a, an annual, or I'm sorry, a monthly publication in terms of, instead of a bi-monthly publication. But even when I joined Patrick Martin, Councilmember Martin, meeting with the constituent, who I, I think that we would characterize as a very knowledgeable and informed constituent who is engaged in things that are. was engaged in things that are going on at the city, there was still quite a bit of gap in terms of fully understanding these issues, right? And so we put out as much as we can, and I think the recognition here is that there's so much more that has to happen because just putting things in front of people for them to read is not necessarily making them or helping them to understand, because just reading doesn't always get you there, right? There has to be some additional context or additional detail to get folks all the way there. So as we think about the town halls or we think about other ways to do this, you're right, we're just going to have to do better.
I appreciate that. I, you know, I'm reminded of, at the beginning of my term, when I started doing this, the Cedar Avenue Bridge and the evolution that the populace went through with that. And so very mindful of that. And so I thank the manager and the mayor for trying to do whatever we can do. I know that's a difficult thing to do. The last thing I had here, and I would have just covered this with you, Jamie, but I didn't meet with you on Friday, is there's been a couple of people who we've had some problems with our organics being picked up at all. And one happens to be my house. It didn't get picked up. And so we wrote in to the city, and they said they'd pick it up. And my neighbor's got the same problem. A couple of the neighbors around there still hasn't come by to pick it up. So I keep putting stuff in there, and I say, I love the program, I'm glad we're able to get that moving. But I'm a little bit concerned about the attentive to the detail there from the haulers to get out and get that, get those organics. And so I don't know what needs to be done. I still have it down there at the, and maybe I'll go and check again tonight and see if they maybe picked it up. But I've got a number of people, and I don't know if anybody else has had this happen, but it just happened to be happened to me, so.
Mr. Mayor, council members, council member Loman, Mr. Keel is here, and he will report back to Laura and Ellen and make sure that whatever kinks we have in the early stage of this, that they're getting worked out. So we'll provide some follow-up later this week.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. At the risk of using a phrase that I know we all dread to hear, I hadn't planned to speak tonight. But I just, the comments the manager made about the knowledge gap and all of that and the discussion we've had around public comment and how folks are informed about issues that the city is discussing, the city council is discussing, sparked a thought in my head. And the first thing I want to bring up is sort of a more nuts and bolts kind of issue, but I don't think it's one frankly that the council should necessarily make the decision on. And that is how we do notices of public hearings in the Sun Current. And I can already see the city attorney looking at me, so I'm going to go ahead and preempt and say, I'm not suggesting we remove any of the things that are required by law. What I am suggesting is that there's perhaps a more inviting and attractive way of running those public notices so that they come to folks' attention more easily. I remember, and I remember, Mayor, we talked about this, we were at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference in Duluth, and they had a session on engagement. And they talked about legal notices in the paper. And I kid you not, folks, they were like, here's an example of a really terrible legal notice, and it looked almost exactly the way our legal notices look, like almost the same font and everything. I think there is a better way to do that, that will get folks' attention and satisfy legal requirements and ensure that, you know, to a greater extent, that folks feel informed about what's coming up. I don't think we, I don't think any of us are in the graphic design business and probably shouldn't be anyway. But I'm going to suggest that staff look at that and think about a way that we can run those notices of public hearings and legal notices and those sorts of things that folks may be interested in, in a way that, you know, while being sensitive about cost and all of that, gets folks' attention more directly. The other piece I want to bring up is really just sort of something, I think, to ponder because I've been, I've been thinking about this too. Because often, when we have public hearings, when we have the discussion on public comment, what we hear is, well, I didn't know about this until last Thursday, or whatever, you know, I just now heard, or I heard about it over the weekend on social media. And so they come to the hearing, and it sort of, for a lot of folks, feels like a fait accompli because they come to the public hearing and then we're making the decision right here that night. And I don't have any specific ideas, but my request to all of you is just that we think about ways that we can reform our sort of legislative process so as to try and reduce some of that reaction, that folks, you know, whether it's being, because a hearing was published in the council packet, or, you know, someone says, oh, you know, whatever, they're taking up this thing on Monday, that if, you know, to the extent that we can, that we can reduce some of that conflict, that folks feel, and, you know, this gets to the point that some folks were making previously, that folks feel involved earlier in the process so as to try to reduce some of that confusion, so as to try to reduce some of that unwelcome feeling of surprise when we consider ordinance changes or development plans or whatever it may be. And I don't have any good answers. I thought I had a good answer, and the city manager told me I didn't. But I just, I think that's something that we can kind of consider as a sort of general process reform.
Thank you, councilmember.
Councilmember Carter, and then councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So to your request, do we have a webpage that is just upcoming public hearings? We do, okay.
We do. And, yeah, Mr. Maron, council members, I think the, we can certainly look at how we improve the notices on our website. I don't, you know, I'd love to get some information from comms about how many people land on that page to go look for the information. My guess is it's not very many. And, you know, my guess is there aren't very many that pour through the public notices in the Sun Current either. You know, we can, we can look at some options. I think to meet the requirement for language that we have to include means we're not going to be able to do less space, right? So we're talking about more space, which just means more dollars, right? And trying to figure out how we can try to enhance the invitation or the, to provide some more plain language description of what it is that's being considered and why people should care about it. But that's just going to take a little bit more space, so.
Well, I even think on the city council, like on the city meetings webpage, agendas, webcasts, and documents, on the city council links, there could even just be a link right there that's like links to public, upcoming public here, or links, link to see upcoming public hearings. I, like, I wouldn't know where to look on our website for the public hearings. If I have any questions or if I'm looking for something related to an upcoming council meeting, I just go to this webpage.
Ms. Van Der Schen?
Oh, Mayor members, I was going to just mention that we worked on the webpage, and it says, it's the Bloomington website slash notices, if you want to let your constituents know that. And that's also, it's the public hearing notice, and then we include the other documents too. So like the ordinance that's being updated, like all of the text with the strike-throughs and everything. Right now, there aren't too many there because the paper comes out on Thursday. And I was actually talking tonight about getting those up sooner because we sent them to the paper last Thursday to meet the deadline for the newspaper, and we could put them up on Thursday. And so we could get them up sooner. And then there's also a way on our website where you can subscribe to like the e-blasts, and people could subscribe, you can subscribe by topic, by meeting, by commission, by board. And we'll look into whether people could subscribe to like getting a public hearing notice, email a blast alert as well.
And Mr. Brillhart is indicating that he can do that currently, so we can make some changes right away.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thanks. Yeah, I think, I think the email or the blast thing is really cool. As we think about our IT budgets for the next five years or so, finding a way to text message people would be also very cool because that's where lots of people get their information today. So being able to subscribe for a, you know, kind of a 311-esque kind of, hey, this thing is coming up kind of thing would be cool. Or if you decided to create a Twitter account, for example, that was just notices, and somebody didn't have to listen to all the crap we put out there, we only had, they only wanted the notices, maybe that was, you know, like, you know, Bloomington City updates or something like that, that's not the formal one that, you know, we use for everything. So just a couple more ideas there. City manager, I know we had the, in public comment today, a question about the DMV. I was wondering if you might be able to just give us the latest on where we're at with that. I think people are under the mistaken impression that we intended for it to go away and never come back, and I know that that's not the case. And so I'd love for you to talk a little bit about how, if, you know, if we know when it's coming back and what your process is there, that'd be great. Thanks.
Mr. Maron, council members, councilmember DeLisandro, thank you for the question. I think it's a really good point because the wish from the council when making that discussion, or making that decision, was pretty clear that we would like to see a private operator come into the marketplace to the extent that was possible. And our city staff has had communication with a private operator who is interested in coming into this market. Couple of check-ins with that, with that operator. One, they were also trying to get a couple of other operations off of the ground, and so this was not their top priority. And the second is that there's a process for getting a new deputy registrar approved. And if it is within a, an area that is served by other deputy registrars, there's a 10-mile distance requirement that it has to, it has to have the consent of the other deputy registrars. The operator has been, I think, preferring to try to get a legislative fix to reduce the mileage separator rather than ask for the other deputy registrar's consent. We're clearly at a point here where the legislative session is about to timeout, and I'm not aware of any legislation that's moving in that regard. And I think that it's more likely that they will have to go through the process of asking the other registrars. So once those two things are done, then they would be able to come into the market presuming that they don't have any opposition from the other deputy registrars. In the meantime, there are what I would think are conveniently located options that are not too far from Bloomington, both at Southdale and at the city of Richfield. So those are not too inconvenient from a time and distance perspective, recognizing it's a little bit more than what it was previously, so.
Council, anything else? I just have a couple of things. First of all, we, I mentioned it earlier, but we had the state of the city address last Wednesday, and just wanted to call out the outstanding work by our communications team in pulling that all together. Janine Hill was the leader, and she's just absolutely great. Emily Taplin, Grant Parker, and Ben Viner did just outstanding work with it, and it really went well. Councilmember Carter and councilmember DeLisandro were there, and it was about 190 people over at the Radisson Blue. It was good to see everybody back together all at once. We ended the evening, or ended the afternoon, the luncheon, acknowledging the Bloomington Public Health employees who did so much over the past couple of years. And it was, it was, it was a very well-done tribute to them, and I know they, I hope they appreciate it. I think they probably did. It was, it was very nice, and they got a rousing standing ovation, and so a well-deserved standing ovation. So just wanted to thank everybody who put all the time and effort into that, especially in our communications staff, but I know there were other folks involved as well, and they just did a great job. So you can view it online if you'd like, so it's really good. The second thing, I just wanted to update you. So Bloomington is part of an organization called the Municipal Legislative Coalition, or I think it's coalition, isn't it?
Commission.
Commission, exactly, thank you. It's 19 cities in the metropolitan area, and the one thing that we all have in common is that none of us receive local government aid. And it's, it's been a group that's been around for a while. It's 19 cities, everywhere from Rosemont up to Maple Grove and from Woodbury over to Minnetonka. So it's a big group and cities totaling, I think, close to a million in population, about 990,000. The big thing that we talk about is the economic engine of this group. It accounts for, those cities account for 22.5% of the state of Minnesota's sales tax, which is just amazing when you think about that and the number of jobs that are in those cities, in those 19 cities. And I bring it up because today we had an opportunity, we sat down with the governor, and we were able to talk with him, about a half dozen of us mayors, and able to represent the MLC and talk to him about a number of things, and most in particular, to talk about housing, because housing is on everyone's mind in so many different ways, and the governor is very supportive. But then also to thank the governor. I don't think in either the House or the Senate tax bills, there is the provision, but the governor is recommending the elimination of sales tax on municipal projects, for example, fire station number four. And it would be, it would be an enormous savings for the city of Bloomington and for really all municipal agencies and counties for that matter as well. And it, it just makes sense. It's basically a pocket transfer for one level of government paying another level of government sales tax, and it doesn't make any sense. The tricky part is, of course, that it would be a lack of, you know, a reduction in revenue for the state of Minnesota, but at the same time, it would also be very beneficial to our communities because we wouldn't have to be paying. It would be a $70 million hole in the state budget, which tells you how much cities and counties are paying toward, toward sales tax for construction projects. So just wanted to update you on that. It was, it's good to actually see people around in the Capitol again, and I'm sorry I didn't give a call when we were there, but it was a good meeting, and it was good to talk to folks about, about what we were doing and had the opportunity to spend a couple of minutes talking about what Bloomington is doing as well. So that was, it was time well spent. So just wanted to update you on that. Anything additional, council? Seeing no hands raising, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Loman, second by councilmember Martin, to adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no further council discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much for the conversation tonight. Thanks to everybody who participated. Thank you to staff. Everybody have a great evening.